We are live now on YouTube.
Okay, are we ready to go?
Yeah, we're ready.
Okay. Do we have any people who are still waiting to be let in?
I have one or two just occasionally. I just let one more in, but we're I have done waiting right now.
Okay, I'm going to officially call this May 14th meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I wanted to start with a thank you to staff for all of their hard work. Getting all the logistics of, to my knowledge, our first Zoom Planning Commission meeting together. Wanted to start with some preliminary statements. For those of you who are joining us for the first time, once we get to the non-consent items of the agenda, you will recognize that we have each item will be addressed with first a staff presentation, followed by an applicant presentation if there is one, and then we will be able to open up to comment from the community before we have discussion and ultimately a vote on the issue. So we want to make sure that everyone who has an opinion can present their opinion. If you're joining us live, the way to do that is to fill out, there's a half slip of paper that will include information such as your name. You will write your name on that piece of paper and provide it to staff. Those requests to speak will be answered in a first come, first served basis. We will actually have staff will call the person up who wishes to speak and then bring them into an adjacent room where we have a computer set up so that they can make their statements on the Zoom recording. If you are joining us virtually through Zoom, you will also have the ability to speak. Please raise your hand, or you may also add into the group chat your request to speak, and then once you're acknowledged by a staff, we ask that you unmute yourself and make your comments. And then generally there's also the ability to make comments through chat, the group chat, for those of you who don't have audio capabilities. Once we get to the community member comment portion of the agenda, staff will be looking over those comments and reading those comments aloud into the records that we can preserve it. Similarly, we will also be having staff read the comments that come through on YouTube and through other media. So that's the way that works. Also would like everybody to be aware that the time limit for public comments is three minutes. When you do get recognized and are speaking, please begin by stating your name, followed by your address, and then limit your comments to three minutes. If you are an attorney who's representing a group of individuals that exceeds two individuals, yeah, you will be given a time limit of 10 minutes within which to make your comments, but we will strictly enforce the time limits because we have a rather large agenda to move through this evening. As far as commissioner comments, I would ask that you, once you are recognized to speak, please make sure that you've unmuted yourself and begin by stating your name for the record. That is, should be the first thing you say before any comment, so even if it's a motion or a second, we need your name for the record. We will also be doing voting. Renee is going to call roll for the vote, so we'll have to orally take the vote. So be sure that you've unmuted yourself when we're voting. And then just a friendly reminder that like any other Planning Commission meeting, all of our comments are, you know, subject to the open records. So we don't want to have any communications that are not oral and being recorded. So please no specific texting or chatting through the Zoom feature. With those preliminary statements, I'm going to to begin with the roll call, please.
Mr. Peacock?
Present.
Ms. Williford?
Present.
Mr. John? Mr. Knotts?
I'm here.
Ms. Zink?
Present.
Ms. Byrd?
Present.
Mr. Beck?
Present.
Ms. Bayhan? Mr. McDaniel?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on into the consent items, I have item number two, TMP-151, approval of the March 12th, 2020 Planning Commission Regular Session Minutes. Item number three, COS-1920-3, consideration of a Norman certificate of survey submitted by Robert and Christina Fieser for Rendale Creek for approximately 13.27 acres of property generally located half mile west of 60th Avenue Southeast and half mile north of State Highway number nine. Item number four, COS-1920-4, consideration of a Norman certificate of survey submitted by Lori Appleton for Woodlands for approximately 13.11 acres of property generally located on the west side of 120th Avenue Southeast, approximately a mile south of State Highway nine. Item number five, COS-1920-5, consideration of a Norman certificate of survey submitted by Tad Bliss Hale Survey Co. for Bliss Farms for 30.84 acres of property generally located on the east side of Porter Avenue, approximately one half mile north of Franklin Road. And item number six, PP-1920-12, consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Builders Rock Creek Investments, LTD for Trailwoods West Edition for approximately 10.48 acre property generally located on the east side 12th Avenue Northwest and half mile north of Rock Creek. Do any members of the commission wish to remove an item from the consent docket? Seeing no such request, does any member of the audience wish to remove an item from the consent docket? Seeing no such request, may I have a motion?
A move. Dave Beck.
I'm sorry, was that second from Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then vote.
Mr. Peacock?
Hi.
Ms. Williford?
Approve.
Mr. Knotts?
Approve.
Ms. Zink?
Approve.
Ms. Byrd?
Approve.
Mr. Beck?
Approve.
Mr. McDaniel?
Approved.
The motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to the non-consent items, we're starting with agenda item number seven, COS-1920-2, consideration of a Norman certificate of surveys submitted by John Daniel for John Daniel Acres for approximately 37.68 acres of property generally located on the east side of 36th Avenue Southeast, approximately half mile south of State Highway nine. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, hold on, please. Okay. Can everyone see that? All right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sorry, that was a yes from Lark Zink.
Hello, everybody. My name is Todd McClellan, and I'm the Development Engineer for the city of Norman, and wanted to present a few slides tonight on this particular certificate of survey. Let me get this to go down. There we go. Just to show everybody where this is at, this is located south of Highway nine over here, just east of 36th Avenue Southeast. It is in the Lake Thunderbird watershed. As you can see, it's a tributary to Day Blue Creek, and it's also in FEMA floodplain zone A. This is the certificate of survey that was submitted. Blow it up a little bit here. It's approximately 38 acres. The proposal is to subdivide the tracks and the survey into three tracks. Track one and track two are 10 acres. Track three is approximately 17 acres. That, oops. The applicant has agreed to put a roadway and drainage easement along 36th Avenue Southeast, 17 foot, which is a requirement. Also, a private road at the north end of the property, approximately 12 foot wide, will serve all three tracks in a 50-foot private roadway and drainage easement. Again, there's FEMA floodplain on the property, and there is a creek that runs through the property with a well-defined channel. And there is also a water quality protection zone that is a requirement for a certificate of survey in this case. Now, the applicant has shown water quality protection zone. However, staff feels that it is not adequate enough to meet the particular ordinance's requirements. And I'm going to present a few slides on exactly what this is. Again, the WQPC history, this started in October of 2009 with the completion of the Stormwater Master Plan. I don't want to read all these items, but I'll just say the ordinance itself was approved by the Planning Commission and City Council in June of 2011. And then since that time, we've had over 35 plats and certificates of survey that have WQPC on them that have been approved by council. Again, this is a map of city of Norman, and anything within the dark black line is part of the Lake Thunderbird watershed. And again, this particular tract of land is located in this drainage basin, hence the WQPC is a requirement. Okay, as part of the Stormwater Master Plan, there were areas of land designated defined as stream planning corridors. And what those are, are those, they're areas land designated in Exhibit 4.4 of the Stormwater Master Plan along both sides of the stream or natural drainage corridor that encompasses the area projected to be inundated by the 1% chance flood event. Hence, sometimes people refer to it as the 100-year floodplain, assuming full build-out watershed conditions in those areas with 40 or more acres of drainage into the Lake Thunderbird watershed. And why this is important is because SBCs may become water quality, water quality protection zones when the property is planted or a certificate of survey is submitted, such as in this case. Okay, this is a aerial photograph with the COS proposed, superimposed on the photograph. And the dark blue line is the stream channel itself. The light blue is the FEMA floodplain. And the green line is the stream planning corridor. So just wanted to show you how this was arrived at. And again, the green line is taken from the Stormwater Master Plan, assuming full build-out floodplain conditions. Okay, what is the water quality protection zone? Most of you probably already know this, but I'll just refresh your memory. It's a vegetated strip of land, preferably undisturbed and natural, extending along both sides of the stream, and its adjacent wetlands, floodplains, or slopes. The width shall be adjusted to include contiguous sensitive areas such as steep slopes where development or disturbance may adversely impact water quality, streams, wetlands, or other bodies. And the purpose is to restrict or prohibit development within the design area in order to preserve the natural state of the area. And it also helps remove pollutants such as nitrogen, phosphorus, and suspended silons from stormwater runoff before it enters the water body. It helps improve water quality, and I think what's really important is the water quality protection zone serves as a best management practice in the Lake Thunderbird TMDL compliance plan. And that is a plan that we agreed to do in order to reduce the amount of pollutants that enter the Lake Thunderbird watershed. Okay, in the water quality protection zone itself, there should be no clearing, grading, construction that disturbs the vegetation on any portion of the WQPC, except as required for initial construction. There should be no permanent structures or portions of septic systems except for structural controls or other enhancing design features that will further the objectives of the WQPC ordinance. And access drives across the WQPC have been allowed. Okay, this is the, getting to the meat of the WQPC. How is the width determined? Okay, well, the width of the WQPC is the greater of the following. It's 100 feet as measured from the top of bank on either side of the stream channel. And again, how do we determine where the 100-foot top of bank is? The applicant is required to submit cross-sections of the stream channel, and they need to go every 100 feet and topo the land so we can determine where the top of bank is, where it's well-defined. And then we go out 100 foot on each side of the creek, and that becomes, or could become, the WQPC. Or it may be the designated stream planning corridor as delineated in the Stormwater Master Plan, which I showed you on a previous slide. Or it's the FEMA floodplain. It's, again, it's the greater of the, one of those three as measured from the stream channel itself. Now, there is a method to reduce the amount of WQPC that is required on a property, and it can be reduced as low as 25 feet as measured from the top of bank either side of the stream when a reduction of nitrogen and phosphorus, or a reduction in nitrogen of 75% and a reduction in phosphorus of at least 58% is achieved through the use of an engineered process. Now, in order to do this engineered solution, as we call this, the engineer on the project must, and he must be a certified PE in the state of Oklahoma. He must do calculations as defined in the Wichita County, or Wichita, Kansas, Settler County Stormwater Manual, and prove that they are achieving the necessary nutrient reduction. And if they're able to do that, then we can go ahead and shrink the WQPC down to 25 foot. Okay, now what we've done here is we plotted where we think the top of bank is, and that is the yellow line. Again, we haven't been able to determine exactly where that is because we don't have cross-sections from the applicant that are usable in order to determine this. So we just guessed this off our GIS system. But in this case, the WQPC will be the greater, my mouse go, will be the greatest of the top of bank, which is the yellow line, the stream planning corridor, which is the green line, or the FEMA floodplain. So you can see over here on track one, the yellow line would become water quality protection zone. Then the green, and the yellow, and so on and so forth, all the way down the stream channel. So what you end up with is this magenta line or pink line here. This is where staff estimates the water quality protection zone would be using one of our methods. And now the applicant has agreed to show the WQPC as the tan line here. And again, that tan line is not allowed to be reduced unless an engineered solution is achieved. Now, there is a clause in the ordinance for variance, and occasionally the track to be subdivided is of such unusual shape or is surrounded by such development or unusual characteristics that the strict application of their requirements contained in this chapter would result in substantial hardship or inequity. The council may vary or modify, except as otherwise indicated, the requirements of design, but not procedure or public improvements, so that the subdivider may develop the property in a reasonable manner. And here in a little bit, you will hear from the applicant, and he will give his reasoning for wanting variance to the requirements. Staff recommends denial of this COS based on the following. Staff is unable to accurately determine the required WQPC buffer width because the applicant has failed to provide cross-sections that are usable as required by the code. No proposed engineered solutions have been submitted by the applicant to potentially reduce the required WQPC buffer as required by the code. And most importantly, the WQPC buffer areas included with the COS were arbitrarily selected by the applicant, were not determined by any of the approved methods listed in the ordinance, are, and are inadequate to meet the code requirements. Can I take questions now, or?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Why are we allowing them to come forward with this when they haven't provided the required information? It feels like I'm wasting my time.
I'm sorry for the interruption. This is Lark Zink. I'm guessing that this is Commissioner Beck by your voice, but I can't see the video. Okay, thank you.
I should have said my name. Sorry.
It's okay, thanks.
Okay. I think that the answer to the question is that the applicant has a right to ask for a variance, and so that's why this is brought forward. But can they, can they ask for a variance without first providing all required information? That's my question is, I don't understand this. If they're supposed to provide a certain kind of information, then they should provide that information before they're asking for a variance. So we have an intelligent process of looking at what their variation's going to be. Right now, we have nothing to look at. So I feel like I don't have enough information and won't, even when they do their presentation. Jane, can you weigh in on that?
Johnny? Am I there? Hello?
Dave, did we lose you?
No, I'm still here.
Okay. We've lost your video, Dave. We need to have, we need to have your video up. Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay, I'm sorry. So can you repeat the question?
My question is, I'm hearing that they have not submitted any of the required documents or engineering. And my question is, how can we even hear a presentation on a variance? We don't have anything to tell us what variance could be compared to what the requirements are. And in seeing what was presented here, I'm not sure why they were allowed to bring this forward.
I think the applicant needs to respond to that. John?
No, you're the ones that make, that allow them to bring things forward. I don't need to hear from the applicant because we haven't got the information from the applicant that we needed to get in the first place.
Hello? Hello?
Lark Zink, thank you, Commissioner Beck, for your, for your question. I understand from staff that it's the applicant's prerogative to request, view his request for a variance at this time, even if the the information we need is not yet been provided. And I understand that we can, when we have the applicant presentation, ask the applicant to address his decision to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any other commissioner comments?
I just think, it's Matt Peacock, I just think this information is incredibly critical, especially in light of the Thunderbird mitigation plan. Not having all the details to make sure that is in sync with that plan, I think is a really big overstep.
Byrd, I want to just second some of the same comments about not being able to maybe make the adequate decision that needs to be made. I'd like to look at the placement of the trailer on track one, and if that's going to be placed or is already placed in a flood zone, but without having the proper mapping, I don't feel like it's at a point where I could make an evaluation on that.
Excellent.
Lark, I think you are muted.
I thought I was going to make that mistake. My apologies. Thank you, commissioners, for your comments. I would, however, like to reserve this portion of the Zoom meeting for any questions of staff, and we will continue with comments afterwards. Does anybody else have a question for staff?
Well, yeah, it sounds like staff wants, or is it going to allow the representative, the developer representative to make their presentation? So I guess we need to hear what they're presenting. Is that the next next phase of this dialogue?
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Yes, yes, it is. If we don't have any further commissioner questions, I'd like to move forward with the applicant's presentation.
Hello? So you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so yeah, this is Johnny Martins, 1821 Quail Creek Drive, Norman. The nature of the creek that affects this property in itself is the reason why we're asking for the exception on this and the variance. This creek is affecting over 200, 230 feet of a 10 acre that's 600 feet wide. And we think the fact that we're putting only one house on a 10-acre track is a huge protection zone in itself. We're not putting a whole, we're not asking for a plat. We're asking for one house on 10 acres. The second house is already there, and it's inside of that zone. That's why it's moved out. You know, we've moved the zone to, so that the house wasn't in it. You know, and that's been there for years. The trailer that's in the lot, at the very front, lot number one, that someday will be removed. The homeowner, or the landowner is going to still keep lot one, but we're trying to break this into three parcels. He's going to continue living on that second trailer, lot number two. And I'm personally going to be building a house on the lot number three for my personal self. So I'm just working with him to help him break his 38, almost 38 acres up. But the fact that this land is impacted so much by the water protection zone, and what you're asking is that for the landowner to give up, you're not giving up ownership, but you're giving up use of over 200 feet of that property. We did get the city, the cross-sections, but they've asked us to do other, more stuff on that cross-section. So that's, but they do have 100-foot interval cross-sections that go 100 feet out from each side of the creek. But the nature of the creek zigzagging through 10 acres eats up over 200 feet right down the middle of that creek. We've put into the certificate of survey a single it and the homeowner gets to own it, they get to pay the taxes, but they don't get enough of the land left to actually use it. So what we've done is we've gone through and said, okay, well, let's, let's still put in a protection zone, but keep in mind, there's only one residence on the 10 acres, on each of those 10 acres. That's a huge protection zone when we're talking about something at 36th Avenue. We could be asking for something that's much more dense than that, but we're not. We're actually for three houses on 38 acres. That, that does protect the watershed in itself because it's going to only have three, three houses and one of them is already there. So that's why we've requested, just because of the manner of it and the language in the, in the statute says, if it affects the property in such a manner and that we have the right to ask for that variance. But I don't need to do an engineering solution to say, I can't give the city this much land because it kills the value of the land, it kills the use of the land. And just putting one house on 10 acres at a time is not a huge environmental impact. That's the reason that we've pushed this forward. We are currently, the city has asked for additional information regarding the cross-sections and we're working on that, but that doesn't change the, the nature and the description of how that creek zigzags back and forth through those first two lots. The second lot is, he lives in that, in that trailer, which not going to get moved. He's, and we own both sides of the creek. So to give, to give the city that much land, and yes, they're just asking for an easement, but you're not really asking for a easement. You're asking for that land not to be touched. You're asking for us to take control, take liability, pay the taxes, but don't use. And so having one house on 10 acres is not a big environmental impact and that, I think that in itself justifies our request for the variance.
I would like to respond. Again, this is Todd McClellan, the Development Engineer. We would be happy to sit down with Johnny anytime and try and work this out, but again, there is a mechanism to shrink the water quality protection zone to where he wants it. It's just, we need the data, the engineered solution. So like I said, we'd be happy to look at it. We just need the data.
Am I live?
You look alive.
Thank you. One of our issues is because this is a homeowner that I'm working with, spending a lot more money on, on engineering solutions and stuff and just making this cost that much more, well, we don't even have a variation of whether or not the city is going to let us work with what we're trying to do to begin with. So it doesn't make sense to hire an engineering company to come in and come with engineering solutions when just having one house on, on 10 acres is a huge solution for low impact on the water quality shed.
This is Lark Zink. I'd like to thank the applicant for his presentation and just remind the applicant that, you know, the applicant is in control of his, of his request moving forward and I think that, that the main concern that is being reflected in these comments is that the engineering mission is not provided. Do commissioners have any other questions for the applicant?
This is Steve McDaniel. You said you provided the, the information to the city, is that correct?
Yeah.
Regarding the cross-section?
Correct.
What was the, what was the additional information that was requested?
I think Todd can probably answer that better. It's, they're wanting us to go out further and give more, more detail on the, on the elevations. We, we used, we used a certain amount of elevation over the creek is what we based our, our lines on. So we followed that with the exception of where the trailers were and where the crossing was to get across to the other side of his property. We, we, we went along and I don't remember if, I don't remember the elevation because on the plat, you don't have to require, the initial plat we put forward or certificate of survey had all the different elevations on it, but, but we had to take that off as required. So there was topography with that.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners. Do we have any additional questions for the applicant?
Okay.
Seeing no further questions for the applicant, we do have a comment from the public. May we have that, Jane?
It says, please do not weaken the WQPZ requirement, especially if the applicant isn't even producing required information. No hardship or inequity here.
I'd like to move into commissioner discussion.
Is that how we raise our hand?
Yes.
Well, my, my comments are, you know, Lake Thunderbird already has issues and ish. The reason we did the WQPZ plan in the first place was because of the pollution in the lake and our desire not to get in trouble with the Environmental Protection Agency. And so we spent money on a plan. Who's got their mic on? Someone's got a mic on that needs to turn it off. And so I kind of feel the same way as that person that commented. We are here to protect our waterway and our water system and the community that we live in. I understand wanting to build a house and it's only 10 acres, but there's been absolutely no engineering provided that backs that up. I don't know if Johnny is an engineer, but all I'm hearing is, well, it can't be that bad because, you know, we've only got 10 acres and, you know, we want to build on this land. Well, we're here, at least I feel like I'm here to protect what's part of Norman and what's better for the, all the citizens of Norman. And I want to protect Lake Thunderbird and all its drainage systems and that's why we don't allow any activity in those areas is to keep it from polluting. So I'd have to say that I can't support this request.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. This is Lark Zink. I wanted to add that I share the commissioners' concerns. Commissioner Beck, Commissioner Peacock and Commissioner Bird, who, you know, I believe that we can't even reach the merits of this request for a variance because the proper procedure was not followed in submitting the request. And so I share the views of my fellow commissioners who've spoken on the subject that this request is not handled appropriately.
Chair, we've got Commissioner Knotts. Raise his hand.
Thank you, Mr. Knotts. Please proceed.
This is Mr. Knotts. The proximity of the trailers to the, the stream are my concern because as stated, they'll have septic systems if, if, if the water gets up, flood the septic system and then it, then we'll wind up additional pollution. So I'm, I'm joining Commissioner Beck in, in resisting this. Thank you very much. Mark, back to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Knotts. Commissioner Wiliford.
And as we ask public participants to do, I will not repeat all of the same words of my fellow commissioners, but I share all of the thoughts and do not support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiliford. Do we have any other comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Bayhand's on here.
Commissioner Bayhand.
Yes, I, I just want to say that I, I agree with, with the other three that have made comments and with Commissioners Zink that this is, this is not a good idea to approve this without the information that was requested. I cannot approve this.
Thank you, Commissioner Bayhand. I would also like to say for the record that Commissioner Bayhand is present.
She looked present.
Do we have any, any further comments from commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'll second Beck.
Was that, was that a motion from Commissioner Knotts and a second from, from Commissioner Beck?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Please vote.
Good question.
Can we state what the motion is?
Yeah.
I'm getting ahead of myself. I apologize. This is Commissioner Zink. Yes, please, please state motion, Commissioner Knotts.
Actually, aren't we voting to approve, but we're voting, it would mess it up to say that we're voting to deny it. That's not the motion. The motion.
Well, that's the motion that I'm making.
Okay, well then, that's the motion we're voting on.
Motion to deny.
When I second that.
Thank you. I have a motion to deny from Commissioner Knotts and a second from Commissioner Beck. Please vote.
Mr. Peacock?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Wiliford?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes, to my motion.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Beck?
Yes, to deny.
Ms. Bayhand?
Yes, to deny.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to deny carried eight to zero.
We have item number 80-1920-41, Oklahoma Axe Factory requests special use for a bar, lounge or tavern for property zone C2 and located at 938 North Flood Avenue. Do we have a staff presentation?
Let me, oh, sorry. I'm not used to sharing my screen. Okay. Okay, I'm Laura Hoggett in the City Planning Department. Okay, we have an application from the Oklahoma Axe Factory for a special use for a bar, lounge or tavern at 938 North Flood Avenue. And the, the property is currently zoned C2 and the, all the adjacent properties are also C2. And the, to the north, south and east, there are commercial properties and the property just west is vacant. Here's an aerial showing the existing building and the parking. This is the existing building, the facade. This is looking north on Flood, east across the street and then south on Flood. Staff forwards this request and 0-1920-41 for your consideration. Do you have any questions for staff? And the applicant is also here if you have any questions for them or on the call, I suppose.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant presentation or are they just available for questions?
I think just available for questions unless they have a, I guess they might have a presentation on their laptop.
Seeing no questions for staff, I'd like to move on to the applicant presentation if there is one.
Yeah, my name is Chris Crowell and my wife are the owners of Oklahoma Axe Factory. It's, what it is, is a ax throwing bar. There are, it'll be our, the fifth one in Oklahoma. There's one in Moore, one in downtown open city, downtown Tulsa and one in Jinx, Oklahoma. It's, what it is, is it's just a fun activity to go in, throw some axes and that target, at wood targets and we're requesting to have beer and wine served in the ax throwing.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant? Seeing no questions for the applicant, I think for your presentation, do we have any comments from the public?
Can I ask, can we stop sharing the screen so we can see the other participants? And I, okay, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't somebody out there raising their hand. I couldn't see.
Thank you, Jane. Seeing no comments from the public, do we have any comments from commissioners? Seeing no comments from commissioners, may I have a motion?
This is Steve McDaniel. I'm going to.
I'm sorry, Mr. McDaniel. We weren't able to hear your motion. Is it four?
I'm making a motion that we approve.
Well, I saw Tom Knotts had his hand up, but I don't know if he was asking for approval because he wouldn't say anything, but he did have his hand up before you made your motion.
He was going to make a motion also, but he seconded.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you. Do we have a motion from Commissioner McDaniel and a spin from Commissioner Knotts?
Yes, that's what we heard.
Thank you then. I'd like to call a vote, Renee.
Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
Ms. Wiliford?
Approve.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Approve.
Mr. Beck?
Approve.
Ms. Bayhand?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion carried eight to zero.
I'm moving on to agenda item number 90-190-47. Theta Gamma Chapter Delta 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 Housing Corporation requests special use for fraternity or sorority house for property currently zoned R3 multifamily dwelling district and located at 1611 South College Avenue. We have a staff presentation.
Hi, Laura Hoggett with the city. We have a, an application from Theta Gamma Chapter of Delta 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 Housing Corporation for a special use for a fraternity or sorority house at 1611 South College Avenue. They have been here for a while, but the, the land was brought in and they were grandfathered. So in order to do an addition onto this building, they need to bring their zoning into compliance. Sorry. And so it is currently zoned R3 and it's surrounded by R3 with R M6 to the northwest. All of the surrounding properties are sorority and fraternity houses. Here's an aerial showing the existing building. And here's the front. This is looking to the west, south. Nope, this is to the west. Sorry, the first one was east. Okay. And we do have the applicant on the call. So I'll hand it over to them. So I'll hand it over to them.
Thank you. My name is Alec Bass with Wallace Engineering. We are the civil engineer representing the applicant tonight. The architects for the project are also on the call and available for questions. The reason for this special use application, like she said, it was an existing use when the current zoning ordinances came into effect. At this time, they are proposing to do a building addition that will expand their dining and kitchen area and provide a storm shelter for the residents. There will be three bedrooms added with this addition. We will continue to comply with all of the Norman parking ordinances. We will also continue to comply with drainage ordinances for any new proposed impervious surfaces, providing low impact design or rain gardens to help offset any stormwater issues. Available for questions if staff or commission have any.
Seeing no questions.
Tom Notts physically has his hands held up on the screen. Tom, there's a button you can click on that will let Jane know that you have a question.
Thank you, Commissioner Notts, please.
I thought I heard we were supposed to hold our hands up, but so what's the timetable on this project?
For the schedule, I'll turn that over to Shannon Marshall, the project architect. Just due to recent events and budget, she'll be more up to date on that.
Yes, thank you, Alec. And the schedule, as you know, with, of course, our situation now has had some flexibility to it. We are currently out looking for bidders with a construction manager. And we hope to proceed with construction this summer with regards to some of the renovation portion to the existing house and start with the addition as well in hopes that it would be complete by fall of 2021.
So it's a one-year project?
Yes, currently. And it's about a fourteen-month construction schedule, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Well, the only comment I'm going to make probably shouldn't be made, but on that end of fraternity and sorority row, you guys really need to do some work because all the new fraternities and sororities just north of you make your house look pretty old. And now especially that the Delta House is burned down and they're going to be building a new house. We need to see this project go forward.
Yeah, we, luckily, the alumni and the sorority organization does prioritize safety. So the storm shelter aspect is the number one priority for this addition project. So we hope that that will bring another level to the Delta 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 House.
When you've tried the rest, try the best. Try Delta.
I always heard Delta, 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 may I help a help a help a you.
Thank you, Commissioners Notts and Beck. Do we have any other comments for the applicant or questions? Okay, I see none. So do we have any public comment?
We have one.
Thank you, Jane.
The comment is from Cynthia Rogers at six three three Reed Avenue. It says, does this remove existing parking?
No, we are not removing any existing parking.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public? Seeing none. Thank you, Jane. Seeing none. Do we have any discussion from commissioners?
This is Dave Beck and I move to approve.
This is Tom Notts and I second.
Thank you. May we have a vote?
Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
Ms. Wiliford?
I approve.
Mr. Notts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Approve.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to approve carried by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you all.
Thank you, applicant. And thank you, Renee. Moving on to agenda number ten. A, ten B, and ten C, which are R dash one nine two zero dash one oh four. Madison Properties LLC requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan for medium-density residential designation and special planning area five to commercial designation and from future urban service area to current urban service area for five point five zero four acres of property generally located north and west of the intersection of Franklin Road and North Interstate Drive. This is going to be considered together with agenda item ten point B. Is oh dash one nine two zero dash four eight. Madison Properties LLC requests rezoning from A to Rural Agricultural District to PUD planned unit development for approximately five point five zero four acres of property generally located north and west of the intersection of Franklin Road and North Interstate Drive. And together with agenda item ten C, PP dash one nine two zero dash one three. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Madison Properties for Madison Automotive for approximately sixteen point eight seven acres of property generally located at the northwest corner of Franklin Road and North Interstate Drive. May we have a staff presentation?
Hello, Laura Hoggett again with the City Planning Department. Let me get the screen back up. Okay, so we have Madison Properties LLC with three applications tonight. The first is the 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan Amendment. And it is currently medium density residential and they would like to change to commercial designation. And they are currently future urban service area and they would like to be in the current service, current urban service area. It's generally located north and west of the intersection of Franklin Road and North Interstate Drive. So the 2025, it is currently medium residential. It's surrounded to the northwest and south with medium density residential. To the east, obviously, is I thirty-five. And then Ruby Grant Park is to the south. And they would like to change to commercial. And they are also rezoning from A to planned unit development. And this rezoning application is for five point five around their acres. So it's surrounded by A two with I thirty-five to the east. And the land use is vacant, at least surrounding the property. To the north is a school and there is a subdivision development above. There are some structures shown on this map just to the south of the subject property. Those are being torn down as part of the agreement for the sale of the property. Here's an aerial. So these structures will be cleaned up with the purchase of the property. And they're also applying for a preliminary plat. And this is for a total of sixteen point eight seven acres. So the rezoning is just a portion of the preliminary plat, but the ownership is all of this sixteen acres. So this is exhibit A. So it kind of shows the difference between the area of the two. And this is the site plan, showing the building on the west with parking surrounding. And here's the preliminary plat. And staff forwards this request for your consideration. And we do have the applicant representative on the call. I believe they have a presentation as well.
Thank you. We recognize the applicant.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. This is Sean Rieger with the Rieger Law Group. Gunnar Joyce also with my firm is on the call. We represent the Bass and Auto Group in this request. And thank you, Laura. I do also want to thank staff. I think a lot of folks don't know how hard staff has worked through this Zoom process and distance process. We've had a lot of meetings with them on mini zonings. And it's really to their credit that we're able to do this tonight. So I do want to thank them for that very much. So what you see on the screen is the subject property. Laura's already showed that. So I'll move. I just wanted to highlight a couple of points so that you understand the distinction here. It is a two-part zoning and plat process. And we've faced this many times over the years in that the applicant is going to develop the yellow site right there, the zoning site. But in front of you tonight is a full preliminary plat for the remainder of the ownership. So we are required to do that as sort of a technical requirement when we come through. I would locate also across the street from I thirty-five is the, we see Solar Farm, Johnson Controls over here. Christian Community Schools right above this and a large body of water right there. One of the uniqueness things I want to point out to you tonight is this is really a very unique site on I thirty-five that is buffered. And the staff report talks about this, but heavily buffered with floodplain. This is all floodplain right here that you see on the screen. And then this large pond of water right here. So it is this little pocket that is just sitting on I thirty-five that has significant buffers around it. And these are the structures that will be removed as part of that process. So it's a unique piece of land. It works very well to isolate as its own piece. The request is to go to C one uses through a PUD. It does eliminate medical marijuana uses and it adds the auto dealership use so that it can be done within the yellow site only. That's the only zoning request. Here is the site plan, basically a fairly simple site plan. Site drains to the south, so it would all drain into a large detention basin right here. Auto dealership building right here and right on I thirty-five. One curb cut and staff has found that to be of no issue. So that's the preliminary plat, just so you'll see it. It's the remainder of the land right here. Most of this is all floodplain and we're not touching it. We're not touching any of the floodplain, none of the W. So it would all reside as is. I do want to note that we did receive one protest letter in the last few days and I wanted to talk about it. It is the house right here, just off the screen to the north. Their request, they actually protested, but they have a request that we're able to satisfy tonight and happy to do so. They asked that we put a line of trees right across the north property line right here. We will submit edits to the PUD to do so. Again, we just got this. So we will put a line of trees right across the north side of property line so that they are shielded from seeing the building as they look across these ponds. So with that, happy to do that and satisfy that. Staff reports noted no adverse land use impacts, traffic impacts. And they noted the large buffer of the floodplain and stream bank orders as a good buffer for this site. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have and I thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, I did forget to mention we did have one official protest letter. And there's a map.
Chairman, Zink, do you want me to stop the screen share?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rieger. Do we have any comments or questions for either staff or the applicant? Okay. I see no questions from the commissioners. Do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, hold on just one moment. Biggs, hold on. Okay, try it now. Mr. Biggs?
Yes, Martin Biggs, thirty-two hundred Crystal Spring Drive. I am the author of the protest letter. I hated to call it a protest letter because we really have no no problem with the construction of the dealership other than that view line. My only, my only comment, one comment, one question. Thank you for recognizing that and for agreeing to place that line of trees. That was our only, our only request. Will that, will that, I assume, does that does this, this meeting constitute a, some kind of binding agreement in that way? Or are we just, I mean, it's not, it's not that I don't trust anybody, but we just want to make sure that that is, that is somehow definitely going to be followed through with rather than just a comment at the meeting. Is there, is a way to ensure that that's done? That's my only concern.
Yeah, Mr. Biggs, this is Gunnar Joyce with Rieger Law Group. Just like Sean said, we're going to supplement the PUD document that we submit for this item. We'll send it to city staff. And that new revised PUD document will have the commitment for the tree line. And that will move forward to city council. That'll be the binding document that's passed if ultimately approved by city council as the zoning ordinance.
All right, that, that's certainly satisfactory and we thank you very much.
If I could, Beth Mukala, Assistant City Attorney for the city, I just want to add, as Gunnar had said, this is a recommendatory body. The binding vote will be at city council. However, this record is documented. This record is sent forward and the planning commission, if they are to adopt it subject to that change, then their actual vote would be based on that. It depends on how the vote is worded.
And again, we're happy to stipulate to that requirement. We thank you, Mr. Biggs, for working with us on this.
We have a public comment.
I have a comment from Cynthia Rogers at six thirty-three Reed Avenue. She asks, where does it drain after detention?
This is Sean Rieger. If it's okay, I'll answer that. I'm going to actually recognize Douglas Hartwig, who is with Craft and Toll Engineering. And Madam Chairman, do you want me to share the drawing again that he can refer to?
Yes, please.
Okay. We do that. Douglas, are you on the screen? You can talk to us here.
Yes, my name's Doug Hartwig with Craft and Toll. The drainage from the detention pond will actually drain towards I thirty-five into the borrowed ditch. It will stay in a ditch about two hundred or three hundred and twenty-five feet before it hits the water quality zone. And then after the WQZ, it will travel another six hundred and so feet to the creek. So it will be in the, it will be natural channel from when it leaves our detention pond to the creek.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Do we have any? I'm sorry, Commissioner Notts, please, please.
That creek is on Ruby Grant.
I'll share again. I apologize for going back and forth, but I want to make sure everybody can see the drawing here. So Commissioner Notts, this is Sean Rieger. That creek actually just, if you could see on the screen, barely crosses the northern edge of Ruby Grant. And then it comes up in this direction up to the northwest and then extends across I thirty-five right there.
So does it drain to the northwest or or toward the lake? In that little river?
Douglas, do you want to, I believe it drains to the southeast.
That's correct.
Yes.
Sorry.
It drains across the Franklin to the the root, the stream bed on Ruby Grant, correct?
It drains basically that way. Yeah.
Well, no, your engineers said it's draining out to the channel along I thirty-five and then south. So it's not draining into Ruby Grant Park. It's actually getting drained into the creek past Ruby Grant Park, right or not?
It is basically that connection. And Douglas, if you want to add to that, but that's the drainage that takes it under I thirty-five.
Okay.
You are, you are correct.
I love that.
I was paying attention.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner Notts?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant or staff from the, from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to proceed with Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Beck.
My only comment is the ideals that we have for Ruby Grant Park and for the residential area around there. I'm just really disappointed that of all the things we could have gotten on that land, we're getting a car dealership. And I understand we have to have car dealerships, but to me, that's not a very sustainable or environmental place to put one, especially with people and kids around that park for activities and stuff like that. So they said no increased traffic, but the access road is going to be where traffic's coming, you know, from the north off of, not 19th Street, whatever that street is, and south from Tecumseh. You're going to have traffic going back and forth, and it's going to increase. I know it's not going to use park, parking lots, but I just, the idea of a car dealership in that area is not something I really like. It doesn't seem like it blends in well.
Thank you. Do we have any other discussion from the commissioners?
Matt Peacock, I'm just going to second Commissioner Beck's statements. I think with this, the proximity of this to Ruby Grant Park, I don't feel like this is in the spirit of the overall land use plan and is certainly not the highest and best use of this property.
Thank you, Commissioner Peacock. Do we have any other comments? Then I'll take a motion.
I'd like to move to approve this project.
Thank you, Commissioner. And a second?
Erin Williford, a second.
Mr. Peacock?
No.
Ms. Williford?
Approve.
What was, what was that? Oh, approve. Okay. Mr. Notts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Approve.
Ms. Byrd?
Approve, subject to the addition of the tree lines on the north of the boundary.
Good point.
So I just want to interject. We would need to have a different motion to make the entire vote subject to it.
I'd like to revise my motion.
A friendly amendment?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to move to approve the project with the stipulation of the addition of the, of the tree line.
Thank you, Commissioner Notts. Do we have a second?
I second.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Did that come from Commissioner Byrd?
Yes, sorry. Commissioner Byrd, second.
Thank you. And a vote, please.
Mr. Peacock?
No.
Ms. Williford?
Approve.
Mr. Notts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Byrd?
Approve.
Mr. Beck?
No.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to approve with the addition of the tree line passed by a vote of six to two.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. I'd like to, just before moving along to Agenda Item Number 11, just remind everybody that you will be able to make public comments as long as you request the ability to speak, which you can do so in person by submitting the half sheet of paper that has your name and address on it. Those requests will be acknowledged in the order that they are received. If you're joining us through Zoom, then you can raise your hand, and once acknowledged, you will be able to speak. And if you have no audio abilities, you can comment on the chat, but you'll want to precede your comment by some sort of identification that this is a comment that relates to, that this is a comment, so we don't accidentally overlook it and include your name and address so that it can be read into the record. Individual comments will be limited to three minutes. Any attorneys representing multiple parties can have a comment time of up to 10 minutes. And I would just ask that, in the interest of efficiency, it's perfectly fine if anybody agrees with comments made previously to state that agreement rather than listing in detail items that may have already been discovered, discussed at length. So.
Chair, I'm sorry, before you start, I noticed, and I know we've already had the vote, so I'm not sure how we want. Mr. Biggs has had his hand up down here, but the item is already closed, so I don't know how this works.
Thank you, Jane. The item is closed, and we're moving on to Agenda Item 11. 11A is R-1920-73, Second Act LLC requests amendment of the Norman 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan from high-density residential designation to mixed-use designation for approximately 1.22 acres of property located at 542 and 534 South University Boulevard. Agenda Item Number 11B, O-1920-52, Second Act LLC requests rezoning from CCFBC Center City Form-Based Code to CCPUD Center City Planned Unit Development for approximately 1.22 acres of property located at 542 and 534 South University Boulevard. And Item Number 11C, O-1920-53, Second Act LLC requests vacation easements located within property located at 542 South University Boulevard. Do we have a staff presentation?
Laura Hoggitt with the City Planning Department. Second Act LLC does have three applications before Planning Commission tonight. The first is a 2025 Land Use and Transportation Plan Amendment, High Density Residential to Mixed Use at 542 and 534 South University Boulevard. So the subject tract with its high-density residential, which is, it shares that to the north and to the east. To the south is institutional, and then to the west is low-density residential. And they would like to switch to mixed use. Their second application is a rezoning from Center City Form-Based Code to Center City Planned Unit Development. So it is currently in the Center City Form-Based Code under the urban residential frontage. Let's see, to the north is residential, south is some parking lots, east is campus corner, and then to the west is residential. Here's an aerial showing the site. This aerial is a little dated. The apartment buildings have been torn down since this aerial was taken. And their third application is to close some easements on their property. They are OG&E and Cox Communications easements. And they were for the apartments that used to be there, and since they've been torn down, they aren't really necessary anymore. And this is the site plan for the application. It says the parcel to the north will be the thrift shop that the church has. And there's no proposed changes to that site or the building at this time. Here's a rendering showing the proposed architectural style of the hotel. This is the site currently where the buildings have been demoed. The white building in the back is the existing thrift shop. This is looking north on University. Straight across the street to the east, and then looking south. So this is kind of back in the parking lot to the west of where the hotel will be. The white building is the thrift shop that exists right now. And you can see there's a fence that has a little gap. And then there is some parking to the west of the thrift shop that goes onto a one-way street. That's Toblerone. And this is the parcel is to the north, the 534, where the thrift shop would be located. And then I went back behind on Park Drive. So this is on Park looking south. And so this shows the front of that thrift shop, and then the hotel would be to the east of this, but in the west, looking at the. This is kind of the fence. I tried, I tried my best to kind of get a picture of where the hotel would be. It's kind of hard to do without walking on people's property, but this is looking south. And we have a 14% protest from the notified property owners. Okay, so that's all for the staff presentation. We do have the applicant, their representatives on the, on the call, and I believe they have a presentation as well. And we forward this for your consideration.
Thank you. Before we get to the applicant's presentation, do we have any questions from the commissioners for staff? Okay, seeing none, we recognize the applicant.
Thank you, Chairman Zink. This is Sean Rieger, representing Second Act LLC for the project. I do have a large team with me tonight, but first I want to recognize Scott Lambert, applicant in this matter, to address you briefly, and then we will get into the presentation and show you everything about it. So Scott, if you will, please.
You have to unmute first.
Thank you. I'm really excited about presenting the noun to everyone. Commissioners, thank you for your consideration on this project. I've worked on it for over 15 months with the, I've met with over 200 people around the city, business people, neighbors, city staff. From my point of view, I can't imagine a better, better staff to help someone navigate the process, develop someone, help develop a project in Norman. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. I appreciate OU's involvement. I appreciate the church's involvement. And but most importantly, the staff has just been off the chart. So thank you, staff, for everything you've done for me over the last 15 months. I really appreciate it. I'll turn that back over to you, Sean.
All right. Thank you, Scott, and I will share the screen here so we can get going. Hopefully, everybody can see that. So this is a large project. Obviously, tonight, it's garnered a lot of attention. We greatly do appreciate staff very much for helping us through this project. These, when you get into the range of $20 million projects, they're complicated. They take a lot of effort. They take a lot of time, a lot of planning, a lot of consideration, and so these take quite a bit of steps. I'm going to take you through a fairly lengthy PowerPoint tonight so that you have all the information you need. I think that's very important that you have that, and certainly we have the whole team here to answer all questions that you have. And it is a significant team. I do want to make you aware of that. The architect, who should be given great credit here, is GH2 Architects out of Tulsa. They are with us on the call tonight. Kara Shimpus Hall is the principal architect. And I would just say real quick, I have to note this, Kara will probably be embarrassed by that, but that little FAIA is not easy to get. F means a fellow of the American Institute of Architects. They do not hand those out easily. Kara is that renowned as an architect in the industry, and we're really proud to have her on this project. Ree Burden of GH2, John Graham, SM2, Mohammed Khan, all the, on the call with us tonight for the civil engineering. BJ Hawkins, traffic engineering, me and Gunnar Joyce. We also have economic consultants, Dr. Robert Doffeback of OU Price College of Business, and Dr. Keith Willard, professor of economics at Oklahoma State University. We also have construction consultants, firms that have helped us through the project as well as Manhattan Construction. So when you get into these scale of projects, you have a large team, and this one is no different. So let's get into it. Let's talk about where this is. A remarkable project. It's really rare for us to be able to advocate a project like this in front of you. We're humbled and proud to do it tonight. This is the proposal for the Noun Hotel. The Noun Hotel is cited, as you can see on the screen here, in a location right next to Campus Corner. This is, this is Google Earth shot of downtown Norman at the top. You see Main Street right here as it moves across downtown. You see Boyd Street right here, the North Oval right here. The site is just north of that, Campus Corner right next to it, and of course, the University of Oklahoma down below it, the stadium right here. Just for a point of reference dimensionally, as the crow flies, we are a half mile from Sooner Theater, .4 miles from the OU Stadium. As I zoom in to the site, you can see University Boulevard right here. The site is right here. Campus Corner right next to us, McFarland Church at the university up here, and OU North Oval right here. Just zoom in, keep going a little bit. You see the site, all these properties, I think we'll show you that, but University Avenue, White Street, the Valera Restaurant right here, or Presbyterian Church, right street, Obermann Drive, Park Drive behind us. As Laura said previously, the property was a fairly dilapidated apartment complex. It's been removed now. I would note that the apartment complex did access Toblerone off the backside over here, or actually, I'm sorry, the apartment complex did not, but this parking area did access Toblerone back in the back. You'll see in a moment, this proposal removes that access. The site plan in context, and I'll show you quite a bit more detail as you go through this presentation. The site plan for the site of the building is this. You, South University Avenue right here, White Street right here. And the light blue structure is the fairly vertical structure that takes us up to 54 feet in height. That's going to be a main point tonight that we're going to talk about. And then this lower gray volume right here is a 16-foot height, one-story building right there. The site accesses off University Avenue in two different locations. We'll talk about that in just a moment as well. This is just to orient you, basically, the generalities of the site. Actual site plan to orient you to that, it's a 92-person hotel, 92-room, I'm sorry, hotel, 75,000 square feet. And you see the red outline right here is the, is the outline of the actual building. The building sits up front, close to University Avenue, and the first outline in red is the tall structure of the four stories. You see it right here, and this lower structure right here is one story, 16 feet. Ground floor is lobby with three floors of guest rooms above it. It has a restaurant, meeting rooms, boardroom, fitness. As you would expect with a hotel of this kind, it has those types of support services. Anticipated opening is May of 2022, of course, sooner if possible. Very important for our thank you to understand tonight, the CFBC does allow this site for overnight lodging and related support services. So as a hotel, this property is an allowable use for a hotel. The primary concern of the CCPUD tonight is the height, and we'll talk about that in great detail. And the second part of that request is the first floor being a restaurant, which you will see in a moment where that is located. So the use of a hotel and support services is allowable. It then is a question mark as to whether a restaurant is a support service. We didn't want to make that distinction. We want to go ahead and put that in front of you tonight. So that's the overall site plan. Parking is in the back. I'll show you in just a moment the parking plan in a little more detail. This is floor plans, just for your information. On the first floor, this is the ground floor. So University Avenue is out to the right here. The main entry is this lane right here, two-way lane that comes in under the building, I would note. So the large tall structure spans over the entry drive right here. You will see more of that in just a moment. And then the lobby drop-off is right here. The main lobby space is here. These are meeting rooms right here. This is an outdoor, basically patio area, breakout area. This is breakout area over here as well. The restaurant and bar is over on University on the far. The restaurant and bar is over on university on the far eastern side of the site. Back here is support services, offices, the reception desk, and things of that nature. This is a typical guest room floor, and you can see, actually, if you see that red outline right there, that is the first floor footprint. And then you see over here, you see three columns that span over that drive, and you see columns that span over this drive. That is this piece of the building right here. And then this piece of the building over here that span over each of these drives. And I'll show you a little bit more about that in just a moment. These are typical guest rooms, a typical floor of the three floors above. I would note the second floor does have a different layout in this area right here because that is an area of a bar that overlooks towards campus corner. And I think you'll see that in just a moment. We did have a request today from one of the commissioners to provide section drawings, and we submitted those, but I wanted to show them to you tonight. If you're familiar with architectural plans, section drawings is basically like slicing a cake. You just take a knife and slice it right through that building, and then you look. And so this section is section B, and if you took a knife and just sliced right through the building right there, and you looked that way, this is what you would see. And what it shows you, it's good for sections to show you this. It shows you the dimension of the floor plan, I mean, of the various floors. So we have a twenty foot, what we would call floor to floor height. So slab to the next slab height. Then we have fourteen feet on the second floor. And then we have ten feet and ten feet on the third and fourth floors. That takes you to the overall building height of fifty-four feet, which is at the roof deck. When you look at Center City Code, it talks about building heights being measured to the wall plate. We're not sure how wall plate integrates with this. Typically, wall plate is where the structure meets the exterior to wall. So we have labeled that as the roof deck, which we believe would probably be the equivalent of, of the wall plate. So fifty-four feet to the roof deck. Then this section right here is sliced through the building east to west, looking to the north. So this again shows you the lobby area right here, the meeting area over here. This is restaurant over here, the second floor with a little bit higher volume right here. And the third and fourth floors right here, these are basically all guest rooms that you're looking at as we slice through the building, looking to the north. We also had, excuse me, a request today from one of the commissioners asking us to put together a, a graphic of owner occupied residences in the area to not owner occupied. Now, I would couch this by saying, the only way we have to do that is to look at county assessor records. And we're happy to do that, and we did that today. When we look at county assessor records, we can see what the mailing address is and what the property address is. And so we are making an assumption that when the mailing address and the property address are different, then that indicates it likely is not owner occupied. So going through that analysis, looking at the neighboring houses to the west, this is what was determined through looking at, at county assessor records. And you see the red dots are owner occupied, twenty-three of them. And we just looked at the yellow area right here, which is the area that, that basically is to the west of this site. Forty-three of them, the green circles are not owner occupied from our assumption of the mailing address being different from the property address. So this is important to note. This project, as Scott told you, has been in the public eye for quite a long time now. And it's been in the public eye because Scott has gone through months, months and months of effort to his credit at meeting, I think, everybody that would possibly meet with Scott. And it's really a impressive feat that he has undertaken to go meet with everybody he could many, many times. I want to extend great appreciation to Councilmember Lee Hall, who has given him a great deal of time, and so many others that have met with Scott, for him to try to figure out how to do this in the best method possible. And of course, through the zoning and plating process, development process, as you all know, as commissioners, one of the things we do is we have a pre-development meeting. We have a pre-development meeting with the neighbors. And that's anybody within near proximity of the site. At the pre-development meeting, this building was different. It was different than what you're looking at tonight. And at pre-development, you will see on the top of this slide was the building in two different viewpoints. You can see the building was at pre-development, three guest room floors above a mezzanine. And a mezzanine in architectural terms is basically a floor within a floor. A mezzanine is a floor that tends to look down into a lower floor. And so this was a mezzanine that had restaurant and bar within it, and then looked down into the lobby space below. Well, we certainly heard from the neighbors, and the neighbors said they didn't like the building height. They didn't like the massing of it being that large. And so Scott did what a good developer does. He went back to the drawing board, and he challenged the design team to do what they could, try to figure it out. How do we downsize the verticality of it and maintain the rooms within? And they did that, and I think quite impressively what they did. And we actually got calls when the Journal Record article came out with their story versus what we had shown recently. People noticed it. It clearly is noticeable. You can see at the top, a much taller building at pre-development changed to where now we have three fours of guest rooms still. But instead of a mezzanine for a, a second level or a mezzanine level restaurant bar, we took part of the second floor of guest rooms and have isolated them very carefully within the floor. But now we have crunched it down where there's just those three guest room floors over just the lobby floor with only part of the second floor being for that, that bar that looks towards the university, towards the North Oval and towards campus corner. And you can see it's a fairly striking difference between what was at pre-development and what was now. And that's really in direct accommodation to the neighborhood that gave us those considerations. You can see now, as we look down University Avenue south towards the North Oval, you see also a significant change. Again, it was three floors of residences over a mezzanine floor. Sorry about that. Let me go back to that. Over a mezzanine floor right there. And then the, the first floor below it, taking out the mezzanine floor, we now have just the first floor and three guest rooms above. Now, how did he maintain the same number of guest rooms? Well, he did it again through very creative architecture in that they took this wing of the building right here and spanned it over a fire exit space right here. They did so because part of this proposal tonight, I'm going to show you, is for this house to become thrift store of the church. And so it's not a residence anymore next to it. We can do that, and we're not imposing upon a residence. We're able to keep the number of rooms. We're able to lower the building. We're able to accommodate fire trucks through that in a, in a fashion that the Norman Fire Department agrees with. So I wanted to make sure you saw that significant changes that resulted in, we think, a much better project and in accommodation of the neighbors' concerns. So now, let me take you through a bunch of visuals of the proposed building tonight. This is it. GH2 Architects, again, great credit to them for what is foresighted architecture, clearly emulating University of Oklahoma buildings. A clearly much more higher aesthetic than what you would normally see on just a lower end hotel. What you see here is University Avenue, looking at McFarland off in the distance, three floors of guest rooms. The only part of this building that has balconies is right here, looking south towards the University of Oklahoma. This is that second level veranda, a bar looking out towards campus corner and towards OU. This is the main entry drive in towards the building, the lobby space back behind this area. More imagery, looking south now on University Avenue, again, foresighted architecture with some great brickwork. And you see the, the building as it fronts University Avenue and looking to the south. I'm going to span through these fairly quickly so you can see more and more information. I should note, it's called the noun. We've had questions. What does the noun mean? Well, the noun means quite simply north of the university. So it's a, a really a cool name, and I think a lot of people are kind of grabbing onto and, and liking. That's the noun. And you see it right here. This is the main entry space, again, University Avenue right here, some onions and signage, and the overlooking veranda right there. Here is what we have as a ride share drop off. So we're on University Avenue. We have an east drop off. This is really intended to be Uber or Lyft, a ride share drop off, pickup zone, come and go very quickly. We, we wanted to incorporate that into the project, make it a piece on university, probably a public art piece. I'll talk about that in just a moment as well. Very important that the streetscape is, is handled properly intimately, good scale, good presentation to the street. And GH2 has spent a lot of time at looking at that and how it does confront the street in a very good, pleasing fashion. The restaurant is right behind here. There will be outdoor seating, restaurant space enclosed behind this facility. So now I want you to see, this is the west side of this building. So University Avenue is over here on the right. This is the neighborhood off to the left, McFarland, you see off in the distance. And important to note here, again, foresighted architecture all the way around this building. This is coming off University Avenue, drop zone into the lobby area, continuing on back into parking area back here. And this is the outdoor patio area, meeting rooms right here, just inside this enclosure. And the housing is off to the left, but I want you to notice, and you'll see a lot more images of this. But the building stops well short of where it gets back to next to the housing. That's really quite intentional. Here is that outdoor space planned just outside of the meeting spaces off the west end of the building. Few more details of that. You see the west courtyard, sitting spaces, and, and just some contemplation zones in that area. So really a beautiful project. They've spent a great deal of time on this project, making sure that it fits, fits the area, intimate, foresighted architecture, very well done. So what are the concerns that people have had? Well, height is the number one concern that we've heard. Staff report tells you that. And so we look very, very carefully at height. Previously, it was taller, as I mentioned, at the pre-development hearing. And so what has been proposed is fifty-four foot roof right here, sixteen foot roof right here. And to notice the dimensional location of that, this is a single family house right here. And it is about eighty feet from the fifty-four foot height. That's going to be important for you to see in a moment how that relates to what it could have been under a full build out of the massing of Center City Code. With the thrift store relocated as part of this proposal, then the only part of the, the higher end of the building that connects next to one of these sites would be the thrift store and no longer a single family residence. Also, to the west, we are a long way away from the single family housing over here, three hundred feet away from the fifty foot, fifty-four foot tall roof. And I should note, the Center City Code allows for forty-six feet to, again, wall plate. So we're asking for an eight foot variance tonight, only in the location of this light blue area. We are not asking for that variance anywhere else on this site, and I'm going to show you next how that makes a big difference. So what is fifty-four feet in height? How does that relate to this area? Because we can throw out any number, but what does that really mean? But we went around and took measurements. Manhattan Construction did this, took approximate measurements for us to show us what these buildings were. And what you see, again, this is a staff report that mentioned the most commonly mentioned concern is building height. We wanted to make sure that we were in some realm of context for what that height would be. And so in the area, you see on the upper right is the Noun Hotel with the red outline. You see A, B, E, F, C, D. These are various buildings in the general area of this site, and you can see all of those dimensions right here. McFarland Church, of course, being the largest building, hundred feet tall. But you have the Fred Jones Art Museum right down the street, sixty-five feet tall. You have White Hand Hall right here at about fifty feet tall. You have the engineering buildings over here at about eighty-five feet tall. The Valera Restaurant is probably the closest thing to us, and it goes really two different levels at about fifty-six feet and seventy feet. So our proposal of fifty-eight feet to the parapet height, but as it concerns CFBC, fifty-four foot to the roof deck is very much in context with a number of buildings in that area. I would also note, though, that the Central, Central Library, just built as a city in Norman project, was built to a height of sixty-three feet, sixty-three feet tall right on this edge, and eighty feet apart from residential immediately adjacent to it. And recall, we were eighty feet apart from this residence at fifty-four feet tall. So very much in context relative with what has been done in the area, even by the city itself. So we asked the architects to go back and show us, we know what we want in height and need in height to make this work. But how does that relate to what Center City Code would allow us to build as a matter of right? And so what GH2 did, really some remarkable work here to show you the building within the box. And so Center City Code is basically an allowable code to build within a build to line, as we call it, or basically an edge condition that you're allowed to build to. And what you're looking at is this light ghosted gray box, excuse me, is what the Center City Code allows you to build to as a matter of right. So tomorrow, if the owner wanted to, they could go get a building permit, of course, to fit the uses, which would be student housing, mixed use housing, high density residential housing, and build out to this mass of gray as a matter of right. And so the request for the eight foot in height is relative to the sense that it is only requesting for eight foot more in height in this area of the light white area you see right there. It is not requesting it over in these areas. And in fact, in these areas, it is giving away significant volume, which we're happy to do, but very intentionally doing over by the single family house off to the northwest. CCFB allows a forty-six foot tall building fifty-five feet from this house as a matter of right. The proposal is for a fifty-four foot tall building eighty feet away from this house. So we're asking for eight, eight more feet. That is almost twenty-five feet away from where it could be. I want to show you more images in that regard to show you, they went around the building in this way. And you see, this is the old thrift store right here that would relocate over here. Again, the light gray box is the allowable build to volume under City City Code, Center City Code on this site. The white is the roof just poking above that allowable volume by eight feet, and in only in those areas. As you go around the building, I think this view is really quite remarkable. You see the ghosted gray building as a matter of right could be built back to here. It could be built out to here. It could be built out to here. It is not. The request is to only build it vertically, eight more feet, and not penetrate out beyond the walls where it could. And so we think Scott's done a great job here with GH2 Architects to keep that building away from this residential house right here, keep it away from Toblerone Drive and Park Drive, and really give great sensitivity to those areas. A few more locations, I'll show you again. This is the northwest side. So the residential is down at the bottom of the screen. And again, that gray box is allowable build to volume. We're not asking for that. We're asking only to poke above by about eight feet. So what does that look like from the ground? Same method. We're showing you the allowable build to box in light gray right there. And the building behind it is all sided in the same addition. But you can see, if we were standing on University Avenue, looking at this building towards McFarland over here, the only thing visually that will poke above the allowable bill, buildable volume is just this little tower area right here. The rest of that eight feet is, is pulled away from the edge condition. And so the resultant effect on the street is that we don't have a much more massive building than what could be built as a matter of right. Going around the building, I'll show you that same context. This is now looking south on University Avenue. Again, the light gray ghosted box is the allowable build to volume. We are tucking way back behind that so that we're sensitive to the neighborhood off to the northwest. And this, this is again, I think, quite a stunning view. This is Mr. Harris's house right over here, off to the northwest over here. This is looking from the parking lot back up. All of this gray volume is yielded. We are not building in that gray volume, but is buildable as a matter of right, and over here as well. And the final view of that, looking from Toblerone Drive, you can see those gray volumes would come much closer to Toblerone Drive, much higher than what we're proposing to build to in this location. So the architects have done a great job, and I think Scott has, to their credit, employing this building away from the neighborhood, using that eight foot of verticality in locations that is not noticed by the neighborhood at all. So then the question was asked, well, okay, what will we see from the windows of the guest rooms? Well, Scott, to his credit, went out and, and hired a drone company to show us. Let's take a drone up to the height of every window on the north and west sides at those locations, and let's see what we see. And that was done very recently, just a few weeks ago. A drone was put up in there, very calculated at the window heights, and you see number one right here, looking to the west. That is what you see. Neighborhood is off to the west behind a wall of trees. There's no visual of any house behind there. Number two is right here, looking off to the northwest. This is the thrift store right here that is proposed to be relocated. This is a little four unit apartment building, if you want to call it that. I know that it's been a bit of a sore point and dilapidated for a long time. And as you notice, in the second viewpoint, that's the only thing you see. Going across to the north now, looking north from number three window. Going across to the north now, looking north from number three window, you do see a house just beyond, this is the second house in, I believe, to the north. Number four over here, again, you see a couple of rooftops. And then number five, we went up where the the building comes over the fire lane, and we look out again, it is a wall of trees. So there is no imposing uh upon the neighborhood, quite simply uh for the fact that it's enthrouted in a in a forest. So traffic, another concern, of course, we hear this all the time on every project, and we certainly hear it on large scale projects. Uh this one no different, we had folks question whether we had handled the traffic properly. Well, we hired TEC, you've certainly seen them before, the city Norman has hired TEC before. To look at this very closely and give us their opinion. Uh TEC through a sealed stamp report submitted their memo, they looked at it, they said the small amount of traffic generated by the proposed development. Would have minimal effects on the surrounding roadways and no traffic related issues are anticipated as a result of the development. Just to highlight again, the traffic layout, this is University Avenue on the right. This is the lane, the gray lanes are the basically circulation around the building. The main entry drive is right here, two way in and out, so we have the drop off zone for lobby. We go straight back to the parking area back here, there is an alternative location here, just in case there's any issue with this. And then there is a fire lane, one way exit out of here. I would note that right now there is an existing curb cut right here that is usable both ways, this would convert to one way out only. And I do want to update you on something that happened just today. Uh in your memo, it was questioned as to whether we had the curb cuts located properly per city standards. We were notified today by Mr. O'Leary and staff that they have approved the locations of these curb cuts and granted them. Uh in the location that they're showing, so we're very pleased about that. Uh I would note too, and I didn't mention it earlier, but Center City code requires us to provide a connection. From the neighborhood back to uh campus corner. Uh we've done that right here, we have a location of a six foot sidewalk that extends from the neighborhood over here. Over to your South University and then on over to Campus Corner. Parking plan, of course, is something we've been asked about. Uh Center City code is is quite unique in parking, I will tell you, there are about. Uh four different sections in it that talk about reserved parking, shared parking, uh minimums, maximums. Uh so it's a little bit complex, a little bit confusing, and I think a little bit ambiguous as to what is is the correct uh. A methodology of it, but I would tell you for commerce use, which this is, there is no minimum parking as a reserved uh count required. Uh there is a minimum shared parking area. For maximums, there are maximums parking, we have not reached those maximums. But we have plenty of parking right within the zone of those various requirements. And the parking layout is basically one hundred and twenty four dedicated spaces, one hundred and seven spaces in the back. Seventeen spaces right here and optional spaces to the south. Now, this is still uh in the mix, and what is happening there is, you might have seen it, but. Uh OU through work with the church, one of the things that came about when we were doing this project. Is you can imagine this is a complex project with a lot of property uh around it. What was interesting is when surveys started to happen, we found that there was an ambiguity as to who owned what in this area right here. Well, uh OU thought they own certain areas, the church thought they own certain areas. County assessor thought differently of all of it. So it was a little bit of a uh query as to how we figured that out. Well, just last Friday, OU and the church, uh we met with OU, with Eric Conrad, Bo Jennings. They've been very helpful to us throughout this project, and just last Friday, the OU Board of Regents cleared the way. In an expedited fashion, I might add that we were told in full contemplation of this project. The OU Board of Regents voted just last Friday to allow the church and President Harris's office. To work out the property ownerships right here. Then now, once that's worked out, we can finalize agreements with the church. As to exchange agreements and lease agreements to make sure all of this works, that is ongoing right now. And we're very confident that we can resolve that as proposed in the plan tonight. Now, also, commercial lighting ordinance will be filed, Center City code also has an extensive lighting. Uh requirement section in it, we're proposing nothing different there, we will follow all the lighting requirements, so everybody will be protected with that. Stormwater, obviously on any project in Norman anymore, we get questioned on stormwater. And Mohammed Khan is on the call with us tonight for questions on this. But I will tell you, in nineteen years of doing zonies in Norman, I don't think I have ever seen as extensive of LID or BMPs. As I've seen on this project in front of you tonight. And what you see here is back in this parking area, which is an existing parking area. There is a green space right here. But right now, this water uh simply falls from the sky, of course, and goes wherever. There is no collection of it, there is no filtration of it, there's no gathering of it, nothing. Well, this proposal through this developer, uh Scott Lambert is provo- is proposing to change all of that, really quite remarkably. The proposal is to create curb and gutter around the area so that the water cannot flow off into these houses. And then you see the various collection zones, all of these right here are collection zones that will collect the water. And then we'll send that water into bioretention uh swales, tree wells, you see them all listed right over here. Uh and it will be mandated by LID and BMP best management practices. This is important because in order to get to eighty five percent impervious, which the Center City code allows you to do. You're required to do all of these things, we've not asked for a variance on any of it, we have agreed to do all of it. And then, once he collects all of this stormwater you see in this area, it will be taken in piping. Down this way into the subgrade, a stormwater system. That doesn't happen right now, so all of this stormwater will be collected and taken away from the neighborhood. Whereas now that stormwater flows in a free for all wherever it goes. Really a remarkable solution that Scott deserves great, great credit for. Streetscape, as we narrow into a few of the uh following minor points here, uh Streetscape for those is an important one. And it's important that they're going to create a really iconic landscaping plan for this pedestrian plaza, you see it from above right here. They do anticipate a public art piece right here, right next to the rideshare drop off zone. Significant landscaping up and down this area in contemplation of the restaurant seating. And pedestrian passageway right through here, and of course, you will have the neighborhood coming right through here down into here. Uh with their pedestrian passage. Uh again, very sensitive zone. Center City talks about very candidly park wants. And this developer has embraced that very strongly, they want that. We have the location to do that, sometimes we don't have the location to park once. Here we do, we have the location that's walkable, straight to OU, straight to downtown. You can see we are on the embark route as way as it comes right down through Campus Corner. Bike routes, we are right next to multiple bike routes, and you could see right here, we're very close to Legacy Trail as it spans up and down the area. There will be shuttles from downtown Norman, Walker Arts District, Festival Galleries. Uh really significant park wants strategy is what's involved here. And again, it's the location that gives us that. Uh I don't think I've ever been able to show you a project uh suggesting we have walkability and been able to show you this. So we just simply got on our phone, right? We all do it all the time, what what's the map to go from here to there? If you take this site and you map it to the Sooner Theater and you click the little walk button, it's a sixteen minute walk. Point seven mile walk right up there to Sooner Theater. If you take this site and you click Louis Louis uh Louis Grill and Bar, right at the corner of Aspen and Boyd, it's a six minute walk. So from this site, in six minutes, you can walk to the far corner of Campus Corner. You click this site into the OU Memorial Stadium, a fifteen minute walk. Tremendous walkability, tremendous location, I would suggest, I don't think you will find a better location that gives you walkability to downtown and OU than that. Few more slides, Center City TIF. This is an important thing to think about, Center City, as you might recall, has a TIF. I know TIF's been a bad word in City Norman for a long time, right? We've all heard it. But this TIF was unanimously approved by City Council, was uh highly lauded as it went through the process. It is an ad valorem TIF only, and this TIF was passed with a policy guide. And the policy guide uh back in two thousand seventeen had a number of policies in it. And this is from page one, page one of that policy guide. Talks pretty extensively about what they hope to achieve, but when you look at this, it talks about enhancing the tax base. And making possible development and economic growth. It talks about supporting and incentivizing and creation of attractive, high quality viable mixed use developments. To draw residents and visitors into this area. It talks about attracting new investment in business. And it talks about stimulating Center City as a livable, walkable, vibrant destination. Now, it's important tonight for you to understand, we are not asking for any TIF proceeds, no TIF support, no incentives. This is a developer coming for you in front of you with a twenty million dollar project in a TIF that is not requesting public assistance. That's remarkable in and of itself. The TIF to date has generated roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This project has the opportunity significantly catalyze that investment stream into the tax increment of Center City. And Center City TIF will only be successful if it actually generates significantly ta- significant tax increment. A TIF that can't do that ends up failing because it can't generate the tax incentives it needs, the tax funding it needs to make the projects work. So this can be that catalyst for the Center City TIF. And when you look at the economic impact projections of this project. And it's rare for me to be able to show you this, right? Because when we bring projects typically, they just simply don't have the magnitude. That a project like this has. But when you get to a project of this scale, we've been able to show it to you before a few times, Callaway House, Millennium, some of those projects. But we're up in that range with this project when we talk about the estimated in- impact of the the economics of it. The construction alone, just the construction of this project. Is projected to estimate a sales tax generation of eight hundred and ninety two thousand dollars, just the construction. The operations of this hotel annually is projected to be five hundred eighty two thousand dollars. Break that down and you get down to the room tax, five percent is projected to be two hundred twelve thousand dollars annually. That breaks down to a hundred six thousand dollars to Visit Norman, fifty three thousand dollars to Norman Arts Council. And fifty three thousand dollars to the Parks Fund that can be used anywhere they wish throughout Norman. Operations, and this is where the Center City TIF gets quite important. This is an ad valorem TIF, it is expected to generate two hundred and ninety six thousand dollars annually in property tax on this site alone. That's significant, I don't have the number for you as to what the property tax previously is, I'll get it for you. But realize in two, over two years of the Center City TIF, it has only generated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This project alone will pay in roughly two hundred and ninety six thousand dollars a year in property taxes. Present value, this is basically an aggregate number, as I understand it from the econ- economist, seventeen million dollars. Then we get into the jobs impact, the jobs impact of labor for construction. Probably about twelve million dollars of labor income on this project alone. Hotel operations, four point six million dollars. Dr. Doffenbach is on the call with us tonight, if you have any questions about this, he is happy to talk about. Just a few more slides, and then we will close for questions. Something that really has come through as we've worked through this project, as we started to talk to Dan Shim, Visit Norman. And the developer talked to other hotels in the Big Twelve industries, I mean, Big Twelve universities. It it really became stunning uh as we started to see this, and Dr. Doffenbach and Dr. Willitt. Uh really brought this information out to us, but what they showed us was that. University of Oklahoma, unfortunately, is at the bottom, and it pains me to say that, I'm an OU graduate of law school, and I love this. University in this town, but unfortunately, OU is at the bottom, rock bottom of hotels within two miles of the university. This is a summary put together by Dr. Willitt. And it shows you all of the Big Twelve universities, the hotel room capacity between one and two miles of campus. Now, it doesn't show you University of Texas at the top here because Texas is just off the charts, they have ninety four hundred rooms. Within two miles of the university. But the rest of these, of course, we can compete with in magnitude, scale, and desire, absolutely, we can compete. But do we in hotel rooms? Not even close. We have a hundred and eighty eight rooms within two miles of the University of Oklahoma. And that is in the context of only two hotels. We have the Quality Inn, fifty two rooms, about one point seven miles away, and we have the Sooner Legends of a hundred and thirty six rooms, about one point eight miles away. You add in these ninety two rooms, and we still are going to be way behind. The second to lowest place of Iowa State University, which has four hundred and sixty nine rooms. Now, we want to keep going and get there, but I want you to understand that certainly, this is not going to uh close that gap. And I think that's important to know because we've heard comments about what's this going to do to our quality bed and breakfast and those operations. They still have significant room, all of us do, just try to close this gap. So that's an important thing that we all should understand. One of the things I want to show you uh down to just a couple of slides here, this is the Bluemont Hotel, Kansas State University. And Scott spent a lot of time studying this project and this hotel because it really has some remarkable similarities to what we're proposing to you tonight. And what you're seeing here is the Bluemont Hotel in Can- in Manhattan, Kansas, the Little Apple, as they call it. Is premise site cited right next to Kansas State University to the left. Aggieville, which is the equivalent of Campus Corner at Kansas State University, and housing. And if I were to show you Google Earth of the housing in this location, it's really quite remarkably similar to the housing next to this, the noun proposal. And it's a similar size hotel, one hundred and twelve rooms, one hundred and twenty five parking spaces. Five stories though, not four, as we're producing, adjacent to all of those uses, and it has been an incredible success. The Bluemont Hotel, I think there's people around here that have stayed at it many times, we've heard comments about it. And this has been a raging success up in Camp in in Manhattan. We hope to uh produce something very similar to that right here in Norman, Oklahoma. And so how much support do we have? It has also been remarkable, I will tell you, in nineteen years of doing zoning, it is really hard. To bring a private developer on a private project and get that kind of response, I've never seen it happen. Now, I've seen it happen for industries, for groups and people and citizens and leaders come out from Norman forward. I've seen them come out for school bond issues, I've seen them come out for many things. I have not once in my career seen this many people of these these leadership positions come out for a private project ever like this. You see the support you've received, many of them, Visit Norman on the record in supporting this project, asking you to fill in. Norman Chamber of Commerce, Norman Downtown Association just today met with us, and they approved this project or asking you to support it. I won't read all these because I know there's a lot of folks that want to talk tonight, but Dan Shim, uh Executive Director of Visit Norman. Uh wrote a a letter to you asking you to support this. Hal Smith, the restaurateur, uh certainly he has restaurants in the area. Uh he wrote a letter asking you to support this and talks about the vibrancy it could bring to the corner. Chamber of Commerce Scott Martin, Richie Split, Norman Regional Hospital, nothing to do with this project, but he encourages you. Bring this caliber of a hotel into this area of the city. Judy Hatfield has really been a remarkable steward of the Campus Core area, brought us our first TIF in Campus Corner, brought it up to a new level. She too sees nothing but good things about this project that it can bring. I do want to read this one to you, John Woods wrote a personal note. And and he said, I have personally experienced an inability to bring colleagues and officials to the University of Oklahoma. For conferences and meetings, losing out to Stillwater and other campuses because we do not have a university adjacent hotel. So you have seen the support letters, they are mighty and many, we encourage you to consider those. I do want to close with one though, and this is one that we received yesterday from Richard McCown. I think probably everybody in this room and call uh knows Richard McCown. He's been a steward of uh good developments through their Urban Land Institute and many projects throughout. Richard McCown has nothing to do with this project, to my knowledge, nothing at all. But he wrote yesterday out of the blue, and he talks about this project, he says, I would like to humbly request that you approve the rezoning of the noun hotel. As the co-chair of the Center City Master Plan and Form Based Code. This development exceeds my greatest expectations for what we might have hoped for at this location. This property establishes an incredibly high bar. And he goes on to say, while this building exceeds my expectation, is is exactly the kind of development hoped for. By so many of us who gave our time, energy, effort, and knowledge to try and create a development framework. That the community can be proud of, basically is his closing line. And so with that, I'm happy to close, we have the entire team here tonight to answer and answer every question you have. We have answered, I think, every response of the neighborhood and concerns, be it stormwater, be it traffic, be it height. Four sided architecture, park wants, massing that is pulled away from the neighborhood. And in context, then lower than what they would have seen from the massing of the build to ride area. With that, I thank you very much, we're happy to stay as long as you want and answer any questions you have, and I yield back, thank you very much. Scott, the screen chair.
I lost my mouse. I apologize for the delay. Do we have any questions from commissioners for the applicant?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Yeah, good presentation. You've obviously worked hard to do some things that were concerning to a lot of people, especially in the residential neighborhoods. I still have a couple of concerns. One is noise. And two is, um, has to do with noise and truck traffic. Obviously, there's going to be lots of deliveries, lots of big trucks, lots of noise. And a picket fence isn't going to stop noise. And having that little outside patio area, I don't know what your intent is for music or entertainment. Uh, but that's, that is probably to me the weakest thing about, uh, it brings the building down, which I love, but it's right next to the residential neighborhoods. Is there a way that we could do some more substantial and higher wall systems to block parking lot lighting and sound from the parking lot and the, um, outside patio area to reflect it back away from the residential neighborhood? Because I know it's going to be a big deal.
If, if I can, Commissioner, thank you very much for that. I do want to show you sort of a two point there. You mentioned, uh, for the actual, uh, exterior patio area, we do propose basically a large wall around that. So from a sound standpoint, we think this area will be quite well contained. Again, we don't really envision large parties or anything in this area. Secondly, too, you mentioned the truck access. Let me show you, um, let me pick the best image here. There are hotel rooms, what I'm getting at, there are hotel rooms that hover right over the back area. This is that rear patio right here. You mentioned the six-foot stockade fence is along this edge. This is the fire lane and service area, you're correct, that is back there. Realize we have guest rooms right here, right off that zone. I know I've heard Scott talk many times in response to this question that he too will be very concerned about noise for his own guests and for his own meeting space, which is right here. This will be meeting rooms right below that.
I'm talking about the residential area over there on Park Avenue, Toblerone, and on Elm Street. Because all this is, you can't see what I'm doing. I don't know if I can view options. Stuff will bounce off that building and delivery trucks are very loud, especially refrigerated trucks. Trash trucks are very loud. And you've got a wall around that outside patio, but you've got a six-foot picket fence. Is there a way we could do some kind of a 12-foot high masonry, uh, wall put discreetly or not discreetly, but in the right place to reflect sound away from that place where Toblerone and Park come together? Because that's, there's a lot of stuff going on there, and that's also the delivery area.
Yeah, I know the team has talked about, I see Kara just unmuted there. Kara, do you want to talk about that a little bit? Kara Schimpf is calling here.
Hi, thank you very much, everyone. We have looked at noise issues on the property, which is why we tried to, um, make the service drive a one-way drive. And we did put that fence there, uh, along the north and west property lines. Putting in a, um, Commissioner Beck, you mentioned maybe a higher or a masonry wall. It has been our experience that, um, for this type of use, a, um, first of all, the noise issues are, um, fairly negligible for.
I don't agree with that at all, at all.
Respectfully, respectfully.
Respectfully, I don't agree with you at all.
I understand your, um, opinion. The, having the fence there is not only to mitigate the vision, but also for the sound. And we'd be happy to look at, um, some other measures for sound mitigation.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from commissioners for the applicant?
Matt Peacock. Can you give me a little insight into why the third curb cut, the southernmost curb cut there, why that exists and why it wasn't looped back into the main drive? I just, I see a conflict with pedestrian crossing there. You've got three vehicular pedestrian conflicts right there, really close to each other. And I'm just kind of curious of some of the rationale. Kara, do you want to talk about that? We're looking, you're talking about right here, Commissioner. These are, this is an existing curb cut right here. Okay. This is the exit curb cut up here. Uh, this would be the second one that comes into the property right there. Before Kara answers to you, I want to say, realize our property line stops right here. This is something actually that came up when we were talking with staff. Our property line, uh, stops, oops, I didn't put it right, I'm sorry, stops right there. So we don't have property over in this area. Well, we certainly will be working on, uh, parking agreements with the church, but our property needs to be served right here as we enter this building. Kara, would you want to add anything to that?
No, I think Sean, you've really covered it is that we don't have control of that third curb cut down there. It's not on the subject property. The two that are on the property, um, we worked with traffic and fire, um, to, to do those.
And it was just today, Commissioner, that we had a special meeting, actually a meeting over just this point. Uh, it certainly wasn't lost on everybody. I assure you, uh, staff was concerned about it initially. Uh, we sat down in a Zoom call, uh, fully safe, uh, in a Zoom call last week, I believe it was. Jane, we had Sean O'Leary, David Riesland, Angela Lombardo, uh, Fire Department, the full team was on board. They looked at that. In fact, I apologize, it was Monday because now I remember this. So they'd give us an answer by Tuesday and we got that answer today. But we had the full team of the city on it. We put forth what we thought was concerned should be addressed. Uh, BJ Hawkins of TEC looked at it as well. And what was really determined was the spacing worked for this site. It worked with White Street, and particularly because we took the existing curb cut on the north and turned it into an exit only, was determined by staff, I think, and I don't speak for them, but then it was okay. And they were comfortable.
I think my concern stems more from a pedestrian viewpoint than the vehicular access. I'm just curious, uh, you know, has there been given a discussion for vacating that southernmost curb cut and just eliminating it altogether? I know it's on the property, uh, but isn't, I, I feel like there's a, an arrangement to use that parking lot with the church. Am I, am I assuming that correct?
That's correct. We're in process of working through those agreements.
I just didn't know if that could potentially be part of that agreement as well.
We certainly could ask. I, my suspicion is it probably wouldn't be done. I see somebody sharing here. We do, let me show you, we, we do get into, uh, how would we then quickly make a quick turn into, to get in the lobby space? Getting into some turning issues. You have the building spanning over this area. It would significantly change this area. It also would significantly take, take away parking spaces that right now are located right outside that lobby. So there are challenges there. I do appreciate though, uh, the suggestion and certainly look at.
Well, Sean, put that plan back up there again.
I, I'm sorry, I'm going back and forth, but I never know if you guys want the plan on the screen or not. So.
That's all right.
Just tell me, uh, if you want this plan up and I'll take it down or put it up or however you want.
Okay, so I get, what I get to use here is my annotation deal right here.
That's right, you gotten good at that, Dave.
If parking was here and just had this as, this could be two-way, and you know, maybe flip this parking out here some way so that you could use that drive and eliminate this drive. The church could work out something. I know there's lots of parking down here for the church, but I can see what, where, uh, my colleague is coming from. And maybe if that parking was flipped over to the north side, on the other side of the driveway where people come in and out of, uh, that could potentially eliminate that third drive. I don't know. Just a thought. I just wanted to use my annotate.
Okay, I'm going to take this, the drawing off if that's okay?
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Do we have any other questions for the applicant from commissioners?
Eric Bird, I have a couple of questions. My first one, the outdoor patio, is that intended to be used primarily by the meeting space or by the restaurant and bar? Would there be any food or alcohol that would be brought outside to that patio?
Kara, you want to talk about that? Go ahead and talk about the planning as you did that floor plans.
Yeah, Scott may want to, um, address this as well, but it is the intent that that is more of a private garden off the meeting space. It is, uh, not intended to be the restaurant and bar space.
Let me go to the floor.
It is off the meeting space though, and it is an outdoor space, um.
Kara, let me, let me, uh, let me talk about that. What that space wanted to do is, is to, um, it's a viewing space from the, uh, the meeting rooms. We also are looking at it as a, uh, we are looking at that to serve alcohol out there as a revenue producing area. Up there for outside, if we have, say, we have a, um, uh, guitar player out there playing where people can sit around, listen to the guitar and have a glass of wine out in that area. Uh, they can access that. There's a hallway, Sean, if you look at the very front, they can access the hallway right there. And, uh, to go there, so I don't, it definitely is going to be a revenue generator. Like on game days, we plan on having people out there being able to, uh, uh, secure that place for their gatherings.
Okay, my next question, the shared parking agreement, it sounds like we don't have anything firmed up. I've heard some rumors about it being a 20-year agreement. I've also heard about offside ballet. Could you add anything additional as to what that parking agreement is? Because that has been one of the primary feedbacks that I've also received is concern about that parking and the fact that there isn't a parking agreement currently in agreement.
Yeah, let me interject first, and Scott, you may want to add, but I'm, what I'm showing you on the screen is Friday, May 8th, this is fresh. This was just six days ago from the Board of Regents action. So we had to get this done first, uh, and then. A process, the Board of Regents just approved this last Friday. And you can see very much they approved this in contemplation of this project. And I would just share with you that, of course, uh, I think it was an official, uh, that had some involvement would say if OU didn't want this to happen, they certainly didn't have to do this, but they did. And you will see, uh, right here, let me just orient you, Commissioner. Uh, this is the area that was ambiguous and you could see it right there. So there was competing, not competing, that's not the right word, just ambiguities as to who owned what. So we had to get this done first, and this was done Friday. Now, the church and OU, as it says right up here, are designated to execute human agreements and execute that sale. Then, of course, we can do so with the church as we integrate our agreements for these two areas. So yes, it is in process. You're correct, it's not done yet. But we very much are back and forth with the church on those agreements. And we certainly understand that we have to have that in place. Scott, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I just, we're working through all those right now, for a real positive manner, in fact. It just takes time because of this, this, the OU church situation.
It does. We appreciate OU's, by the way, for, I was told they expedited, that's not my word. That was an OU official's word, that they expedited that action on the Regent's Dock at Friday so that that could get done in time in a good faith, showing to you, the commissioners, that you see OU was expediting quickly so they could get it done, and now we can work with the church.
There was also some concerns that were brought up about the, the walkway that was going to be on the north end of the property also being against the trash receptacles for the hotel. Is there a possibility to move that possibly further south so that it is further away from that pedestrian area?
Let me show a screen, and I always like people to be able to see what's happening here. Kara, do you want to talk through, I know we had a team meeting on this about this walkway. Do you want to kind of talk through, there's the walkway right there, Commissioner, that you're referring to? And, uh, it goes along this exit drive right here.
Sure. Sean.
Sean, Sean, I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but Kara, could you hold your mic up to your mouth closer? We have people in the audience that cannot hear anything you're saying. I apologize.
I'm so sorry, yes, is this better?
Yeah, you're just so soft, nobody can hear you.
I'm sorry, I will speak as loudly as possible. Um, and let me know, please, Ms. Hudson.
Yeah, that's much better, thank you.
Thank you. The walkway is along the north there. It is, um, intended to be, uh, separated there. As, I'm not sure I completely understood, um, the question about the separation and moving, I'm not sure what was being asked to be moved south.
Yeah, Commissioner, were you talking about the service zone right in this area, right here?
Correct.
Yes, the service zone would be across over by the building. The pedestrians would be kept along the north edge, would be very much of our intention so that they're kept away from the building and away from the service area as they traverse across here.
That's correct, I'm sorry, Sean, you said that much better than I.
So there's not a consideration then to be able to move that trash receptacle then to the south side of the building where it's a little bit further away from the Park Toblerone corner and further away from that pedestrian area?
I would, I would say, Commissioner, one of the things that we've talked about on the team, uh, I think we got a comment from staff, in fact, the orientation of this trash, uh, looking this way probably doesn't work. We probably are looking at reorienting the trash, or maybe, uh, has an introway this way. So I think we're looking at a reorientation. I, I don't think we're looking at a relocation because that would put it out in front of this building, and we're hoping the separation back here would be sufficient.
There was also reference to landscaping along the fence, and I don't want to repeat what the other commissioner said, but just to also vote that, um, I, I really think a masonry wall would be more appropriate there. The landscaping was described, but it, it wasn't necessarily clear what side of the landscaping and what, what type of landscaping. Are we talking about three inches of grass on the inside? Or what would the residents over on Park Drive or Toblerone be seeing on their side essentially from this landscaping?
Okay, and I do apologize, we intended to have our landscape architect with us tonight. And I was told right before the call, we were not able to make that happen. So I do apologize. So I don't know that Kara has answered that, but Kara, do you want to talk about what you've talked about with the landscape designer?
We have currently put the fence, uh, right along the property line. And, um, the landscaping is, um, on the south and east of that because the fence is at the property line in order to get the pedestrian walkway and, um, the fire lane and everything through there. We do have planned, however, um, trees along that, um, fence line.
And I, I say, let me address something on that Toblerone question, Commissioner. We, we plan on putting a, uh, some, uh, grass out there. There's, and we also have a sidewalk, uh, plant because that Toblerone exit is going to be, uh, removed. We put a fence back there. We're, uh, they just asked us to put a sidewalk in that area. And so we've agreed to do that also.
Yeah, that sidewalk would be a connection over where there's not a sidewalk right now, connecting across the parking lot or on the outside of the parking.
I did not see any maintenance required in the putt other than just the installment of trees. Could maybe you speak, or this might even be a city question as to, let's say we plant these trees. We all know trees can not always survive, especially when they're young and planted. What kind of provisions would these neighbors have for those trees being maintained and replaced?
Let me, can I address that, Sean?
Yeah, please do, Scott. Go ahead.
But the, the hotel is a high-quality hotel, so we have to be proactive in all that approach, whether it's in the front of the building or in the back of the building. We, when people arrive at the hotel, they have to know that they're at the Noun Hotel. They, it's, it, we just can't afford to have a dead tree sitting around looking at some of that because that just shows poor, um, poor maintenance. And we want, we don't want that initial feel for our customer when they show up. Does that answer your question?
It does for the, for your motivations, but I'm also considering the, the residential neighbors in the background and protecting them as well. So it is important to me that this property maintain an aesthetic view for itself, but also what are those neighbors getting out of provisions and guarantees that their view will continue to be protected is, is my concern for them.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question, um, Commissioner. And what you're getting is the city has a forester on hand. Yeah, that's, that's a really good question, um Commissioner, and what you're getting is I, the city has a forester on hand. I, is that true? I've heard that that's true, Sean. And we would like to come out and, and judge our trees. We're more than happy to uh, to have them give us an opinion on. But we're going to exceed the expectation of that. So hopefully the neighbors, and we're, and we also are going to be working hand in hand with the neighbors in the back, neighbors on the side, and the neighbors uh across the street, everyone around us, because we want everyone happy.
And I, I, I don't mind Commissioner putting that in the putt if you want to talk about uh forester coordination on, on that landscaping, I think we'd be happy to do that.
I, I had a question also at the prior apartment building. I understood it was 40 units. Do you have any data about how many bedrooms were in each of those units? And how many maybe actual residents were in that building previously?
Yeah, there was, there were actually, it was classified as 41 units there, and there was a laundry uh facility on, on the premise also. And what I was told from the previous owner, they were 30, 35% uh occupancy rate there. Whatever that, I mean, so I could, I haven't done the math, but not that quick. That's the, that's the uh, and the manager was down the street, uh down the street at Campus Corner Apartments. Gina, she managed that, that property also.
Uh thank you for your question, Commissioner. Um I, I would like to remind everybody to identify themselves by name before speaking. And with that, do we have any further questions for the applicant from Commissioners?
Matt Peacock, I got a couple more over here. Um is there any current or future plan to occupy the roof deck?
No, uh no, we have not put that in the putt at all, and so if we were to do that, we'd have to be back in front of you for uh for that request.
Okay. Um I know that in the, there's a use table in the CC uh Form-based code. That complicates the use of a thrift store in that proposed location. Uh have you guys looked into that at all, or have any insight into that?
Uh we did talk to Steph early on if we needed to arrange for a putt amendment of that. We did basically include in the request to shift the thrift store over to that house just in north of us. Uh that is part of the request tonight, is to allow that for thrift store use.
Okay. Uh and the last thing I have here is uh, I see that you're vacating uh utility easement to the north of the property.
And not to the north of the property, it would be utility easements that cross through the property?
Yes. Is that, okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I must have been a little.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh can you just give me some insight to that as well?
Yeah, I'll uh share the screen again, if you don't mind, uh I can show you, I think. Uh I don't know if I can show you not here. Uh oh, let me just uh orient you across the center of the screen. Uh I don't have a good drawing that shows it to you, but I'll just show you here, there are utility easements that run through crossways, north and south, right here. They're basically Cox and O G and E. I would tell you, we actually are not certain that we have to go through a vacation process. Because they may be separate instruments, instrument easements direct to those utilities. But because those are franchise holders, as we call them, uh we didn't want to take any chances, and we wanted to go ahead and, and move through for the vacation easements. If anybody wanted to suggest that those were public easements, we're not certain they are. We think they may be just a direct easement with that utility.
Okay.
That's the request.
But it's still part of the application tonight?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Uh thank you. Do we have any further questions for the applicant from Commissioners?
This is, I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, I guess, please, Commissioner Nott.
So uh Sean, are you, the uh, the thrift store, that, that title will be transferred to the church?
That is the proposal at this time. We're working through those agreements right now, but they would shift the thrift store over to that house just to the north. And then the existing location would become part of the parking lot. One of the significant benefits from that is to get the traffic curb cut off of Toblerone and take it away. Because right now there's an access point there for that thrift store. That would remove that access point, and no longer would you have uh traffic access going back into the neighborhood.
Okay, and, and another point, um we uh, we received a, a letter, not a protest, but a concern about. Runoff in the southwest corner of the, of the existing parking lot, which may, is outside your uh, your uh venue, I think. But, but uh, I'm not sure that that really takes care of what is the southeast part of the existing parking lot.
So I would actually ask Mohammed Khan, uh who is on the call with us tonight, SMC Engineering. Mohammed, do you want to talk about that question? And here is your slide.
Yes, uh thank you, Sean. Uh Mohammed Khan with SMC Consulting Engineers, 815 West Main, 73106. Yes, uh the current status of this whole area is like uncontrolled, undetained, overland flow goes in all different direction. And we have been informed that there are some historical ponding or flooding situation in backyard of our neighbors. Uh which are along the west property line, as well as in the southwest part of the site, and as well as towards southeasterly direction. And the lack of a stormwater control on this side is understandable because there's no inlet there, no carbon gutter. So the slide in front of you shows uh a proposed carbon gutters along western edge of the property. As well as along southern portion of the property. And we are also proposing curb inlets uh within the parking area. The purpose is to capture the overland flow, direct this overland flow to carbon lead. And through a piping system, bring those to the islands, which are shown kind of green look in the middle of the parking area. And route those stormwater runoff through the LID measure. By that way, we'll accomplish two things which are not currently happening at the side. First, we'll divert the stormwater flow away from the southwestern direction. As well as we'll treat the stormwater runoff through these LID best management practice devices. And improve the stormwater quality. Once all of the stormwater runoff is routed or passed through these LID measures, we'll take it in eastern direction. And in grand plan or scheme of things, we are proposing to extend an existing city storm piping or storm sewer system. From University Boulevard, bring it further to the north, along southeasterly corner of our property. And then convey all of the stormwater flow through a piping system. So by using this carbon let, area drain, LID measure, stormwater piping. We will greatly reduce uh any overland flow from the parking area, as well as eliminate any flow. Which currently is uh happening or flowing in southwestern direction, as well as in southeastern direction.
Okay, so I think your, your confined, your work right there is confined to the immediate uh vicinity of the property. I think this, I, I would, I would just suggest that uh because it is kind of a flat, uncontrolled. Uh flow situation that some, some attention is, is given to the west side of all the parking. Moving down toward Boyd Street, because I think that's where it, it naturally flows. And then it uh accumulates, and there, there is a possibility of a, of a solution. To, to a multiple flooding problems there, I think. So that's outside your, your area of concern, but, but uh. You, you've got the uh, since you've got the instruments, uh you can, you can kind of figure out where the problem is. And maybe you can suggest, if not, uh provide a solution.
Yeah, well, we definitely, we definitely will improve the onsite stormwater quality, as well as reduce the overland flow there. And our objective, the way we look at this thing is first thing first, is do no harm. So we don't want to make any current situation make worse there. So that's the reason for having carbon lead, uh uh carbon gutter along the property edges to help the downstream property owners.
Commissioner, I could interject to Sean Rieger here, just uh the property I think you're referencing to is University of Oklahoma property. I don't mind a bit approaching the university as we have worked with them through the parking issues. And seeing if they want to do any kind of combined solution there, I think that would be a good request to make of that.
But you know, you, you're in the area, you've got, you've got the civil possibilities. Maybe you could just offer a suggestion to, because we did, you might look at that letter that, that we received. You may not.
Yeah, we did.
We had a, did you see the copy of it? The guy is on uh Elm or.
Yeah.
Elm or Boyd or something.
I'm sorry, I apologize. We provided that to Mohammed Khan, SMC looked at that letter, and, and we wanted to make sure they saw that and planned on it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we did receive the letter, Mr. Jeff Collins at 449 Elm Avenue. And with some pictures of his backyard.
Yeah.
And I would say that those pictures really indicate what is currently happening. That currently uncontrolled, undetained water flowing in southwestern direction. And the backyards with some grass and earth, it just stays there for a while. So with this proposed storm sewer improvements, uh it greatly reduce, it'll eliminate any stormwater flow from the side. And hopefully it'll improve the conditions around his property.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further?
Yes.
Questions? Commissioner Beck?
Dave Beck. Uh Sean, bring up that site plan again. I just love that site plan. Please.
Uh which one, Commissioner, this one or?
Uh no, the other one. This shows the sidewalk, yeah, this one here. I want to get back to one last effort of saying, um I think, you know, you've got a wall around this. Uh and one thing is that's facing west, and that, you know, the fact that Scott brought up, the fact there's going to be music there, that means there's going to be uh sound there. And drinking there, and so there's going to be a lot of noise generated on that patio. And so there needs to be some controls as to when that happens, because uh that's going to cause a lot of issues. You know, he, he said a guitarist, but I know it's going to be more than a guitarist, it's going to be bands. That's just the way it works. Um so there needs to be some sound control there, as long with sun control, because that's just going to be a bake spot right there on that west side. Um and let me, I don't know why all of a sudden I'm doing gray instead of blue, because you really can't see it. This gets back to sound, and since there's only a cyclone fence along this backside here. Um and lots of cars that were generated here, a lot more than um from churches on Sunday. There really needs to be some kind of a solid wall and landscaping along this west boundary. Uh to control sound and to control light, uh car lights. Uh because you got a lot of houses back here, uh and people are coming and going 24 hours a day at that hotel. Uh their cyclone fence does not control that. And there needs to be some kind of solid control system uh that will assist in eliminating glare, lighting glare from cars and sound.
We have proposed a solid fence along that full west side, Commissioner.
Okay, good, good.
And I would note that right now is a chain link fence, right now that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what it is, and I, there was a concern there, and I've got a concern about that.
Along.
Yeah.
Along the full west and the full north side.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions for the applicant from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Jane, I believe that if, if we have somebody waiting to uh, to speak in, in public, if we can read some of the emails that have been coming in, in the interim while that person is getting set up.
Mark, before we go to, to public comment, could we uh, could we take a break?
A- absolutely. I, I will undertake a motion for a break.
I move for a 15-minute break.
Heard, second.
And a vote?
Hi.
Hi.
Do we need a roll call to vote?
No, we don't. I was everybody smiling.
All those in favor, get up and go.
Come on now, we were such sticklers for procedure before.
Are we calling roll or not?
The chair is, is allowed to call a break. Just please identify when we will reconvene so the public will know.
We are going to call a 15-minute break and reconvene at 9:35. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have a one minute warning before we start the meeting again. I I have nine thirty five. I'd like to officially start the meeting back up uh, with a roll call.
Jane's muted.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, try again.
Mr. Peacock, are you back on?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Knotts? Oh, okay. Ms. Sink is on. Ms. Bird?
Present.
Mr. Beck?
Present.
Ms. Bayhan? And Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Okay.
If I could just jump in with a friendly reminder about what Chair Zink has already advised about commenting orally while the meeting's in session. And also a friendly reminder that we uh, need you to keep, the commissioners, we need you to keep your video engaged at all times when the meeting's in session.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open it up to public comment.
So. So we're going to read one here while we get someone into the study session room and I get them set up for their public comment.
Okay, so I had four email comments from Stephen Ellis at six three three Reed Avenue. The first is, there isn't nearly enough about the structure of the hotel to really tell how much this impacts the neighbors. No sense of height or scale. Um, the second one is the CCFBC is about form, not use. After two years of planning, we decided that there was supposed to be a step down at the edge of the area. And it is residential, not entertainment, not appropriate. The third one is my sister lives at the apartments next to the new library. It looms over them from 80 feet away. Go have a look. And the final one is terrible, terrible argument. We could do something worse by right. They won't. If it made economic sense, they would just do it. There's no threat and no favor either. Red herring. Okay, so um, the public, um, Jane Crumpley is ready to speak.
Yes, Jane Crumpley, four twenty, four twenty three Elm Avenue. I live in the 350 foot protest area. Many of my comments that I was to make, uh, some have been answered, some have not. We really had very little, well, had no knowledge of what would be sent tonight. I could not hear the person talking about noise issue. That is a big, outdoor patio. We see sort of a wall around it. Um, how tall is that wall? Without the consideration of a parking lease so that we know what they're leasing, what they're going to do. Um, I don't really see how this can move forward. The way the presentation is, they act as though they own the parking lot. They, I mean, is it going to be totally repaved so that they deal with all of the drainage issues? They talk about putting up a solid fence to protect those neighbors on Elm. Who's homes back up to that, which is only a chain link fence now. Who's going to do that? I mean, is is that the developer's going to do it? The church is going to do it? How tall is that wall going to be? I mean, to protect our homes from the noise. I mean, we hear the noise from campus corner at night anyway. And now you're talking about a venue that's right so much closer. With outdoor noise. I, somebody asked the question, were they going to be serving beer? Liquor, food, whatever. The way I read the Center City Form Based Code for that area, they're not allowed to have a full scale restaurant or two bars, which is what they're saying. And that hasn't been approved or recommended as far as I know to move forward. So it's as a citizen who lives right there, I mean, it's really difficult to know what to ask. Because again, so many of our concerns and questions relate to, are they going to be allowed to have bar and restaurant? And what is the parking situation? What is the parking agreement? So I mean, at this point, I would hope as you commissioners, without all of the information that I think is necessary. That this project would not be recommended to move forward at this time. And I thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have another public comment, Jane? Oh, Jane, you're still, you're still muted.
Okay, I'm going to read another set of comments. I've got uh. I think it's three comments from Lauren Lackey at one one three zero Grove Lane. The first one, is there any proof the distance of the hotel from the homes will prevent an overcast on those homes? Or the rooms overlooking the backyards? Then she says, will the house to the north that will be used as the thrift store be able to be demolished down the line? And have a 54 foot building put in its place? And the third one is. Are there plans to build a noise canceling wall along the back of the parking lot? I live across Berry from a parking lot, church, and the noise from car doors, et cetera, is a disturbance. Oh, there, yeah, there is one more. Whoops. Will the house to the north be ADA compliant for the thrift store?
Okay, now. We can proceed with the public.
Okay, Mitch.
My question is in 58 seconds long, but I can answer some of the uh, some of the commissioners' questions if you want me to. Related to parking and egress and out of the lots to University Boulevard. But I don't know if you want me to do that at this time. And I'll be over the three minutes then.
Thank you, Mitch. I'd like to ask you to state your name and address and and begin with your three minute comment.
Okay, Mitch Barrow, four twenty one Park Drive. Um, I'm upset with the project's proposal of a four story, 50 foot, 54 foot tall, 90 room restaurant and two bars. Banquet hall, conference center, entertainment venue and other amenities boutique hotel. It is adjacent to my neighborhood. We worked for years on the Center City Form Based Code. When we negotiated the new Center City Code, a compromise was reached, which restricted the property building heights along University Boulevard. The four story hotel is unacceptable. The Form Based Code restricts and requires buildings on the west side of university to three stories. The east side to four stories and most of campus corner to five and six stories. the east side to four stories, and most of Campus Corner to five and six stories. The three-story and 46-foot height is what we agreed upon. This neighborhood manor restriction was adopted at the request of the adjoining single-family residents on Park and Elm. I like the rendering. If you lower the building heights of the building to its maximum height of 46 feet, as per code, with basement parking, I would be in support of the project with conditions. By my calculations, a 25,000-square-foot building by floor can be built on the site. At 500 gross square foot per room, the national average is 400 feet, the building can have 100 rooms. That leaves the first floor entirely for other uses. Please adhere to the Form-Based Code and the Neighborhood Manor section of the code. Only three-story, 46-foot-tall buildings are allowed on the west side of University Boulevard, bordering my 100-year-old family neighborhood. All of the owners, owner-occupied residents adjacent to this project are opposed to it. Thank you." "There are some other issues and conditions and questions that need to be answered. Building height restrictions and neighborhood manners, architectural character, parking, valet parking may be required for the off-site parking. 98% of the parking is off-site. Site lighting, mixed use and project intensity, character and hotel's special uses, alley and pedestrian pathways as required by the Form-Based Code and the First Presbyterian Church's 2005 PUD. Seven, traffic study. Eight, stormwater requirements and flooding. Nine, site noise related to mechanical equipment, dumpsters, and outside music facing to the west and north. Buffer space, 50-foot setback is required. And then the use of the .4-acre lot, a special use is also required for that." Like I said, I'm done, but I can answer about three questions that the commissioners had, if you would like an answer.
I regret that we only have six seconds remaining of your time. So we thank you for your comment.
I, Rick, you want information about the project or not? Your commissioners asked them and they were not answering.
We've, we've limited the comments to three minutes each, and we thank you for your comment. We'd like to proceed to the next comment.
Okay. You don't want to know about things that people ask? It's ridiculous.
Okay, there's one more email that I have. This one is from Travis Darling at 1848 West Robinson Apartment D. It says, "I encourage the Planning Commission to deny the applicant's request in Item 11B because the height of the proposed building is not in the spirit of the Center City Form-Based Code."
Thank you, Renee. Do we have any additional comments from the public?
There's one more email that just came in, but it takes just one minute to get it transferred over to the computer, so bear with us.
Thank you. Jane, while we're waiting on that email to come across, I'd like to direct your attention to the comment that we have in the chat, if we could possibly read that as well.
We have a comment from Loretta Bass. "Hi, my name is Loretta Bass, and I live at 440 College. We are concerned with possible light pollution. How tall and what style will the lighting be? Lower-placed lights in the parking lot is preferable. Thank you." Then we have two other individuals that would like to be recognized to make a comment. We have Cynthia Rogers. Cynthia, are you in the chatroom?
Yes, I'm here. Everybody, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, awesome. Good evening. This is Cynthia Rogers, 633 Reed Ave. in Ward 4. I'm also a professor of economics, and I served on the Center City Steering Committee, which, you know, was a very extensive two-year process, which involved a lot of give and take and a lot of citizen input. It's important to emphasize that the map that was created out of that process and the requirements were very specific about height allowances, and these were hashed out. This was a give and take. The determination of the height limitations west of University Avenue was a hard-fought compromise. People were really mad. Nobody was happy, but that's what made it a compromise. The restriction was there to limit these taller structures from looming over the existing residential homes, but they were also there for another very important reason, and that was to limit the amount of intensity of use at these sites. So it's nice to say, we could do this, and we knew we were going to make things more intense, but this was a limit on that. So there were some guarantees to the neighbors. This request is for both a height and use not allowed in the urban residential frontage in that area. It's going to be a taller structure than what's allowed to be there, and that was particularly envisioned for that location. Mr. Rieger did a very fine job of pointing out taller buildings in the general area, but these are not relevant to the particular location we're talking about, which was that particular area on the map and the 46-foot height limit. Allowing this height exemption would effectively remove the height restrictions for the entire area west of University Avenue. And all future applications will have to do is say, there was a change in circumstances. See, there's this 54-foot height building right there. We're not doing anything different. We're not doing anything new. You know the stick. So what happens if First Presbyterian Church decides that that little house there is worth a lot more as some taller structure? Now the precedent has been set for that to be 54 feet or something much longer than was, what was envisioned. So this waiver opens up a can of worms, and you might as well just rip up the map that we created. I have a couple of questions. How big exactly is the one-story portion of the northwest side of that building? I couldn't tell from what was included in the agenda. What's the justification for exceeding the parking maximum? I think that's very dangerous. I don't know what that means, but that's what was in the pod narrative. The pod narrative had alarmingly few details about what would be, what uses would be there. Certainly, a thrift shop was not, was, what was envisioned for that area and for increasing uses and activity there. And then finally.
Thank you, Cynthia Rogers. That, that's time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. May we have the next public comment?
Email at this point, it's from Brent Swift at 606 Broad Lane. He says, "Was the architecture intended to duplicate or mimic some of the recent new construction projects seen on the campus? If so, why?"
And then I had one more in the chat. Dan Shim, are you there?
Yes, hi, thank you. Dan Shim, 3213 Valley Brook in Norman. Also Executive Director of Visit Norman, and our mission at Visit Norman is to attract visitors, market Norman to, to visitors and get them to come into the community. You know, we're competing with a lot of other communities that have unique areas, walkable entertainment districts. Ours in Norman happen to be Campus Corner and downtown, which are really walkable, new areas. When people come visit a college town, they want to immerse themselves in that college lifestyle. They want to relive their college years and get that experience where they can walk the campus and campus corner. We do not have any properties right now that are within walking distance, 1.7, 1.8 miles away. This really fits a need that we're missing that other campuses across the country all have. So I hope that you all will support this project. It's something that we need here in Norman and something that will benefit through guest tax, sales tax, other things. Visit Norman, the arts, the parks, and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. I have another one. Eugene Queener.
Hello, Eugene Queener, 431 Park Drive. Couple corrections to the information that was given earlier. I live at 431 Park Drive, have lots nine and 10. We are one house removed to the north of the proposed building. We are owner-occupied. We are there in the time. Currently, we have two of our children that are living there full-time. It is a concern. For the drones, number three and number four, you will see our roof. I believe it was picture number three shows right into our master bedroom on the second floor. So there is more there than was communicated. Also, it's nice that the picture was taken in the springtime with the trees full of leaves. Go back and take that picture in November, December, and you will see a completely different, different view. Also, the height will impact our view going south. Just another thing, the walkway, having access to Campus Corner and the university is very important to us. It's one of the reasons we chose to buy in that particular area as we retire and move back to that place. It's nice that there's been a proposed walkway along the north side, so that when we enter the walkway, we can look at the dumpsters and the delivery zone as we walk over to Campus Corner to have dinner. And then curious as to trees planted along there. The initial view that we were shown a couple of weeks ago was on that north side to have a driveway, a one-way driveway out. So now we've added a walkway, and now we've added trees. So are the trees going to be in the middle of the walkway? Did the driveway shrink in size? Was the building moved south? Just kind of curious, what kind of trees? If they're deciduous trees, they really provide no purpose whatsoever. We have deciduous trees on the north side of that fence. Just concerned about many different things along that line.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Queener.
I have a, a couple more. Loretta Bass, did you actually want, did you want to address the commissioners?
Yes, hi. Somehow, I think I missed you earlier, if you called on me. Yeah, I live at 440 College, and I'm actually on my front porch. You can hear the OU bells from my house. Anyway, I, when I look out to the east, I am very concerned about the light pollution element. And so, I mean, there's just so many things that can be done to mitigate that, like trees that are not baby trees, but real trees. And also, lighting in the parking lot, that's not going to be set too high and too bright. So I'm very concerned about those issues, especially just over here on college. And I mean, I really worry for the people on Tobermann and Park in terms of just cars in that parking lot spinning around and, you know, lights coming into these living room windows when they're, you know, in an apartment on Tobermann. And so, I mean, that's a concern for my neighbors over on Tobermann. Thank you. Overall, though, I think that it, it is a nice project, and we do need a real conference center hotel for the University of Oklahoma, and I think it would get a lot of use by the university. But I think this idea that it should conform to already agreed-upon standards that have been well thought out. I mean, otherwise, you just lose the faith of the community in the whole process. Thank you.
Okay, I have another one here. I apologize. I have three different screens. I'm scrolling through here, so bear with me, please. I have hand raised, Bill Hickman.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Bill Hickman. I'm an attorney. I do land use and zoning work on that 330 West Gray Street here in Homan, Oklahoma. And I represent a group of the neighbors in the area that have some concerns and protests regarding this project. I can tell you that the City Form-Based Code was a six, has been six years now since that Citizen Committee started. They started in 2014, and they had dozens of meetings. And I can tell you that while I was the ward four person, I was the person who shepherded that through the process to get it approved unanimously without overwhelming opposition from the neighbors. By approving this as presented, we will be undermining the efforts of those citizens who worked for two years to come up with the Form-Based Code, as well as elected officials who spoke to citizens and encouraged them to support this and allow the Form-Based Code to go into place. Secondly, I think all of us agree, most of us at least, I know I'm on the record publicly as saying that I support a quality boutique hotel in the downtown and Campus Corner area. However, the responsibility of the developer to pick the appropriate location and to do the research at a time to ensure that they're not picking a site that's problematic for the community and the neighborhood. The west side of university is well documented in the Form-Based Code as having restrictions placed on it that do not exist anywhere else in the Form-Based Code, and for that matter, arguably, the city of Norman. And why is that? It's because the neighborhoods that are but the west side of university. So I agree with Ms. Rogers that the reference to any other building heights anywhere else in the community are irrelevant and don't matter with regard to the site of this particular project. Just as another quick aside, I do want to say, as a matter of disclosure and reservation of rights, that on behalf of my clients, we are concerned, and we do not believe that this meeting is being conducted and was properly noticed, and the agenda conforms with the Open Meetings Act. And that's a matter of potential future concern and discussion. But I do want to make that clear in the record that we are participating in this meeting because the city is looking to go.
Yeah, I'm telling them.
But most important of my comments, I think, at this point in time and opening here with you guys, is that the bottom line is that this request for this application is premature. They do not have the documentation, in particular, the parking agreement, that's necessary and required in order for this project to be approved. I heard tonight from their presenter saying, "We don't control that property," referring to the location of one of the curb cuts. That's right. They don't. It's on a property that they don't own. A lot of the site plan that you saw tonight is on property that they do not own, do not have under contract, do not have an agreement in place that would allow them to use the property to be a part of their project. Mr. Lambert may be able to get those issues resolved with the university or with the church, but until he does, any action by this commission is premature and frankly, is a waste of your time to have this meeting tonight. And your recommendation to council would be, without all of the information and knowledge that's necessary to make an informed decision. If your job is truly to be a recommendation body to city council, to rely upon you making an informed decision, then you should not be considering this matter tonight, which is frankly what me and my clients told the city. Because you do not know what kind of agreement is going to be in place. The bottom line is this, if Mr. Lambert does not get the property secured in some fashion that is a part of their site plan, this project is dead. And I would challenge anybody to tell me that that's wrong. If you can't own that property or have it under contract, then how is he going to do this project? He won't have the parking, period. So why are we spending hours tonight discussing a project that the applicant has not brought forward all of the paperwork necessary for you to vote on it and to move it forward? I don't understand that. I mean, that makes no sense to me why the city staff would put themselves in that position and why we as a community would allow that to happen. And I would encourage you, if you don't want to vote no, or you, and I would encourage you to vote no, that in a minimum you table this until next month. Give Mr. Lambert time to go see if he can get these issues resolved and then we can come back and it won't have to be your hours and there won't be all these protests and all this disagreement. Now I'm going to move into some of my specific comments that some of y'all received maybe via email. One, permissible uses at the 542 South University site. I want to clarify real quick, this current location is zoned urban residential. Let me say that again, urban residential. By definition, on page 67 of the form-based code, this is a residentially zoned property. It might include group living. But what was contemplated was, and what happened when this whole thing started was there was a multi-high-density, high-rise project proposed at this location that led to the entire form-based code discussion. And it was going to be student housing. It was always contemplated that this site and the west side of university would be residential housing, not a commercial use. There's a big difference between residential, urban residential housing and commercial use housing. And I don't think there's any dispute that a hotel is a commercial use. I encourage planning commissioners to look at page 67 of the form-based code. It actually has a use unit table in it that sets these things out. So for example, things like an entertainment venue, restaurant and bar and office uses that are part of what they are proposing to add as uses at 542 South University are plainly not allowed under the form-based code. And I have serious concerns when I see entertainment venue because I know how this has worked in the past from my experience that that could ultimately mean an outdoor entertainment venue if it's not properly defined, which it's not currently. And an outdoor entertainment venue in the heart of campus corner in the downtown area, some of y'all may remember the dispute that happened a while back regarding Hollywood corners, which I supported and as a council member to help push through and to get it done because of a lot of backside issues involving errors made in my opinion by the city. We can't make those same mistakes in this highly density area. So that certainly needs to be clarified is outdoor entertainment intended for, or if entertainment requests that they have in their entertainment venue is for the outside. Because if we allow entertainment venue outside, then you're talking about bands and music amplified arguably without the city coming down there with their little noise meter to deal with that. We've already had, and I hear those complaints, at least I did when I was a council member of noise from Ward 4 from the campus corner area. And I can tell you right now, this would be the closest restaurant and bar to the neighborhoods in this down, in this campus corner area because of where it's located immediately adjacent to those neighborhoods. I think that is a serious concern and have the same with regard to the restaurant and bar as well as office uses. So you got to understand, and I know that y'all do, that if you approve this rezoning, hey, the hotel may end up going away and maybe something else goes in there that has entertainment venues, restaurant and bar and office uses that are more substantial. And so I would certainly think that these matters need to be clarified, set out in more detail and certainly prohibit any kind of outdoor entertainment venue and office uses that are strictly prohibited as related to the hotel. As for the 534 South University property, if you notice, there's the inclusion of the term similar business with regard to the thrift store. Now, I interpret that as an attorney to mean that if the thrift store goes out of business, that's a retail business. And, you know, and Sean's a smart, good lawyer and I respect him very much. And hey, there are some times I'm on the same side that he's on where I represent the applicant. So I've been there. I get it. You know, we're hired to do our jobs. So when you see, when I see similar business and they're dealing with a thrift store, that's a retail business. In my humble opinion, and with no specificity or limitations, we could ultimately potentially, the way this is drafted, have a retail business in that house. Or maybe the house could be torn down in the form-based code and a retail business put in there in an area that was certainly not intended and certainly intended to be residential, urban residential. And so that needs to be clarified and strictly limited in my opinion. Let's talk about the height. We very much appreciate the work that Mr. Lambert has done to improve the project from the height perspective. However, the height, like Mrs. Rogers said, who was on the form-based code committee and I attended many of those meetings and chaired the most recent ad hoc committee that made changes. The height is probably, was one of the most sensitive things negotiated and dealt with over that two-year period from 2014 to 16 that led to the culmination of the form-based code. Even, you even can look at page 87 with regard to the section dealing with the CCPUD, section 520C7. And it specifically says regarding building height for a CCPUD, it makes it clear that the west side of university extending from Boyd to the alley north of Apache, which includes this property, shall be a maximum of three stories.
Thank you, Mr. Hickman. That is time.
Is that my full 10 minutes?
That is.
Wow. So I represent multiple properties. I can't get a few more minutes as a legal lawyer to make the rest of my comments when I've been here for hours waiting?
Yes, Mr. Hickman, we've given you 10, 10 minutes, seven minutes beyond what an individual speaker would have.
Well, maybe there's some neighbors on the call that will put in the comment section and advocate, give me three more minutes. But I understand and I appreciate the city's cutting me off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickman. If there are any individuals that would like to make comments, they would have three minutes to do so. They just need to specify either through the chat or otherwise that they would provide this comment. Jane, can we have the next public comment, please?
Do you have any more? I've got some here. Mark Millsap. Is there a comment that she would like to make?
No, I did submit a letter to the planning committee earlier today and that's, that's the comments I'll stand by.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I have John's iPad. Did you want to make a comment? Bryce, can you come here? Hold on just one minute. We're trying to get the rest of these comments here.
I'd like to add for the record that John's iPad has commented in the chat section that he has no comment. Thank you.
Okay, I've gone through all three screens I have and I see no one else with their hand up and I have nothing else in the chat.
Thank you, Jane. Mr. Rieger, would, would the applicant like to address any of the questions that were brought up during the public comment portion?
I would thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that very much. So obviously I've got many pages of comments here. I've tried to kind of coalesce them down to several points here. You heard it many times, height. And we know from staff report and predevelopment and elsewhere that that has indeed been the most significant comment that has been raised and you heard it again, raised many times. And I would just suggest to you that the context of what I heard through the neighbors' comments and we appreciate them very much. We've met with them many times was that what I hear them saying is that it's a rock solid standard that can never be changed. And I would urge the commission to think about what a PUD is. And Center City Code very affirmatively includes within the promise that you can bring a PUD. And a PUD is for these very reasons. Is a PUD is exactly for the reason so that somebody can bring a unique carefully designed project that does allow modification of the code, does allow creative uses that can do things just like this. Things that can take a project through a PUD and give up height, give up volume. Where it does not affect. So I think it's important for commissioners to consider that that's what a PUD is for. If, if the Center City Code is to be deemed a rock solid piece of work that can never be changed, then the PUD aspect should never have been put in it. It was put in it for these reasons. It was put in there for creative design of creative architects to bring projects that we even heard neighbors, and I was really encouraged tonight to hear that the neighbors even agree that we need a hotel and project of this type in this area. They simply want us to keep to a written standard that not every project can meet. And that's the essence of large-scale projects like this. They need flexibility. They need creativity. When a project of this caliber comes in and can do these things and can do it creatively to give up in some areas, what they could have gotten in other areas is the whole reason that a PUD allows us to do this very thing. So I think height is something that I would encourage the commission to think about as exactly what the neighbor said, a give and take. And we have very much given away this volume of area next to the neighborhood to allow for a minor.
Haven't given anything.
So that's what I would talk about height. Many other things. I would talk about precedence too because that was an interesting comment that somehow this zoning or any other zoning creates a precedence. It's important legally, and I appreciate Mr. Hickman's comments about legal issues. Zoning is an ordinance. It's legislative. It is not a judicial act. If anybody else tries to do anything with any of these properties next to it, down the street, up the street, behind it, they will be in front of you with another zoning action running through this entire gauntlet again. They don't have the right to simply get what they want next time. They would be in front of you each time. There was comments from others that said this doesn't allow for a restaurant. It doesn't allow for these things. As a matter of right, they're correct. It doesn't. That's why we're here. That's why we bring zonings. I do think it's an interesting oddity really with the Center City Code in that it does allow this property to be overnight lodging. That is as a matter of right on this property, overnight lodging, under the commerce category. I think it was just probably, maybe it just slipped through the cracks. I don't know. But if you're going to have overnight lodging, if you're going to allow for a hotel, usually hotels, and it allows for overnight lodging and support services, then certainly that would contemplate, in my opinion, restaurant, meeting rooms, things of that nature. So I don't think it's a far stretch in allowable use to bring there. We confer, we agree that it's part of the PUD request. We need you to approve it, city council. But I don't think it's a far leap from what is already an allowable use. The noise in the walls, we've heard that tonight carefully. We're going to think about it very carefully. I know Karen and her team are creative. They'll come up with ways to resolve that. I'm very confident we can resolve that. Lights, we can certainly present more information on the lighting to make sure that you have that. I'm just kind of running down the list here real quick. But comments such as rip up the map. Those are concerning to me because if we're ever going to get things done of this caliber, of this scope in our community, then I could tell you from a zoning attorney that's been doing it for 19 years, you have to work with PUDs. You have to work with spuds and CC PUDs because a framework that is a box is very difficult for projects of this caliber to just to fit within. It's very hard for them to do that. So I think we need to be flexible, but when a developer comes to you with something like this where they have basically modified their plans to fit the spirit, and I do absolutely believe he has fit the spirit. When I stand here in this viewpoint and I look up and I see that building from a visual viewpoint is self-contained within that box, I think we've met the spirit. So I think he's done that. Couple other comments I would address. Neighborhood manners, I think was talked about. He actually has really met that. Neighborhood manners is a very specific part of the code. And I'll actually highlight it to you. It is this area of the code right here. Neighborhood manners talks about setback spaces and heights in this location of the site. And if you can see right there, you see that little bitty white spot right there? That is the only part of the neighborhood manner section that we are not meeting. That's it. We have met the neighborhood manners in this area of the site because we gave away this volume. We didn't ask for excess height there. So there has been tremendous back and forth with the neighborhood. We're very proud of that. We think we have met the spirit. We think we've done a great deal of work to make sure that, that it's well done. And we're proud of the architecture too. Foreside architecture is not cheap. It's not inexpensive. Other lower-end hotels would not do that, not in any stretch of the imagination. And, and that's something they could do here as allowable right of overnight lodging. So, so we're proud of the effort here. We do very much appreciate the comments of everybody and we will take those and go forward with them. The noise, the walls, all of those issues, the commissioners' comments. And so I think with that, I would just sort of couch all those comments in that fashion. And we're happy to answer any further questions you have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rieger. Jane, do we have any other comments from the public that are not duplicate commenters?
I do not.
Thank you, Jane. I'd like to open it up to discussion for the commissioners. Would any of the commissioners like to speak? Mr. Knott, Commissioner Knott.
So I want to, I was pretty favorable to this project in early review and I visited with people, person that has had some major experience in zoning and rezoning. And, and he also felt positive about it, but I was trying, trying to be sensitive to the neighborhood until Mr. Hickman told me that he voted for the, for the Hollywood corners. And, and that set the precedent that, that I would support this project because Hollywood corners, when he voted for that, he disregarded all of the people that lived around that in favor of, of that commercial venue. And so I feel that I have no choice because of his support for Hollywood corners that I need to support this. Thank you. I'm through.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners that would like to make a comment? Commissioner Berg?
Bert, I have just a few other comments because I did do quite a bit of outreach with some business owners, property owners. Really tried to get some additional input. I know that there was a comment that came up and one of the things I did was reach out to the planning office and White Street is proposed to be turning into a one-way street. I know that that was a factor that led them to feel that it was going to be okay. And I know we have somebody from the city who can probably speak to this a little bit better. But that was a factor as far as the traffic of what our traffic count being on university was relatively low for people that would be turning left. And I know that that was a comment that, that people had brought up too about that concern. Um, and I know that that was a comment that that people had brought up too about that concern on there. Um, I mean, this is, this is going to be a very challenging one because ultimately, no matter which way the commission votes, we are going to be disappointing our friends and neighbors no matter how anybody votes on this. So uh, just taking a moment to appreciate the gravity of this and that it is a very difficult decision that we take very seriously. Um, I am glad to see some better use of this property. Uh, the occupancy before with the thirty-five percent occupancy apartments, um, I understood there were some concerns previously with uh, crime rates and the frequency that police cars were present on site. Um, I think a better use of this property would benefit the the whole surrounding area. But I also think that Park is one of the most unique and special streets that we have in Norman. Um, something that we really need to be extremely sensitive to because there's not going to ever be. I mean, you can't even make a one-way street like that today. I I'm very encouraged by the fact that Toblerone Drive would no longer have an exit there. I think that uh, there has been problems with traffic turning the wrong way, mostly I'd say directed because of people trying to access that parking lot. So this improving the property to the effect of closing off that street access, I think would also lower vehicular access uh, tr- through traffic in that wrong way traffic. Uh, that's something that I think should be considered regardless of this project, just for a safety measure. Um, I I, there's just a lot of things to consider and I I really, I can't advise going forward without having a firm parking agreement for the city council. Um, the masonry wall and some really specific landscaping requirements on there. And if uh, I would recommend if they're already making revisions to highly consider, since I know we've already looked at reducing height that they also look at a little bit, if is it possible to bring that height down more and still make this work? Is it possible to make this project work without putting any outdoor drinking and patio use in the back there that's going to affect those people? I mean, those are factors that I think can still be reviewed and um, adjusted prior to this going to city council. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Bird. Do we have um, more comments from commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Bayham?
Yeah, I am. I would agree with most of what Commissioner Bird said and and I I'm really concerned about the fact that we have the city center form-based code and we're just going to essentially ignore it. Uh, it was created for a reason. Um, and I I feel that we need to give it an opportunity to work and and I just feel like the the first chance we get to throw it out, we're throwing it out. So and I've been contacted by many people who live in the area and most of their concerns have been expressed tonight and some have been addressed. Um, but I I I'm just really concerned going forward that this. I think we need to, the idea of the the hotel or or Anna, I think this is an interesting project, but I'm not sure this is that enough questions have been answered to make me feel comfortable with it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bayham. Do we have further comment from commissioners?
Yeah, Dave Beck. Um, I've just been going this way and that with this project. Uh, I'm a firm believer in PUDs and SPUDs. Uh, because that's where you get flexibility. Uh, with Norman codes, you wouldn't have a um, Midway Deli. You wouldn't have what I call um, the uh, Vista Building. I know it's called something else down on Main Street. We have lots of examples of very usable, very neighborhood and hot and enhancing uh, zoning things that if you would follow the zoning ordinances strictly, you would never have. And that's one of the issues that we have here. Um, is uh, on one side, I understand why the form-based code on university was set up the way it was. I personally feel like a hotel would work here. The campus needs one. Uh, looking at it from a professional point of view and from an urban design point of view, um, the only issues that I have in terms of not voting for this tonight is the parking thing to me is the big one, you know, that until there is something on paper. Um, and then the other thing is that west side uh, outside patio uh, sound and light um, uh, to me are the the killers in terms of what it does to the residential neighborhoods and they haven't addressed it. And I'm not sure how they're going to address it. And I'm not the designer. So um, that's my thoughts.
And thank you, Commissioner Beck. Do we have any further comments? Commissioner Williford?
And Erin Williford. I, I'm in favor of this um, hotel, but I think that working together with the neighbors is really important. And hearing them say that they're concerned about height, hearing them with their concerns about the noise and the fence, I think that these are things that can be remedied and should be looked at strongly. Um, moving forward, I think that there is a way for everyone to be satisfied and happy. And I highly encourage you to look at the ways to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Williford. Um, Commissioner McDaniel?
Um, I I would agree with uh, what what Commissioner Williford said. Uh, I'm in favor of this of this uh, project. Uh, I do caution the developer to go back and listen to what what are the, what the comments have been said during this, during this time. Look at those, see if there's any way to mitigate those. Uh, I do appreciate the fact that you've, you've, you've changed the structure. You moved it away from from the residential side. Uh, you've done things that that would help mitigate that. Uh, hopefully that is something that will, that will, you know, will help with this, with these issues and these concerns. But um, but I will be voting yes tonight on this.
Thank you, Commissioner McDaniel. Do we have any further comments or discussion from commissioners? Commissioner Peacock?
Uh, yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioners. Uh, I fully appreciate and recognize the applicant's efforts thus far and realize all the support that the project has. So I sincerely hope that the dialogue continues to find a way to address some of these unknowns and make the project a success. Uh, I also personally think that a project this type and scope would be a great addition to Norman. So uh, I I really, having said that though, uh, I view my role as commissioner is not what my personal feelings are on our project, but whether the project is in following the spirit of the code that's in place. Uh, I agree with the comments. The PUDs are there to allow this type of flexibility. Uh, but my biggest concern is that allowing this exemption would create some future conflict for the urban residential zone. Uh, this, it, the zone was designed as a buffer to protect the neighborhood from heavier commercial uses and uh, to be a soft transition instead of a hard line abrupt change. So uh, again, this project could challenge the integrity of that in the future, but my hope is that there are some creative solutions that we can figure out to resolve it and move it forward.
Okay, Commissioner Peacock. Do we have further comments? I I don't see any. I I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'm going to approve as presented.
I'll second.
That was a motion to approve from Commissioner McDaniel and a second from Commissioner Beck. Um, kind of.
And uh, am I allowed to make a competing motion? This is Commissioner Bird.
Um, I I I believe, please correct me if I'm wrong, Jane, but that we entertain one motion at a time?
Right. Uh, Beth Muckel, a city attorney, you'll want to finish out this uh, motion and if it fails, uh, an alternative motion could be made. Oh wait, no, just just ignore that. No, um, a a vote to the opposite, a vote to the opposite would have the same effect. So I just vote on the motion that's presented.
Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry. Uh, I will um, I will vote to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Bird. Can we have a roll call, please, Renee?
Hello?
You're you're on mute, Jane.
Okay, try this again. Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Approved.
Mr. Knott?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
No.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Uh, Mr. Beck, you're muted.
No.
Ms. Bayham?
No.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to approve uh, carried five to three.
Thank you, commissioners. We appreciate you. Thank you for your time.
Moving on to your agenda item number thirteen, O dash one nine two zero dash four four.
Twelve, twelve.
Oh, I'm sorry, twelve. Thank you very much. Um, I I would like to take this time to um, remind everybody who is not speaking to please put their um, themselves on the. Uh, agenda item twelve A, O dash one nine two zero dash five four. Norman Economic Development Coalition, Inc. and Chikasaw Nation Industries, Inc. Request amendment PUD O dash zero six zero seven dash three five and PUD O dash one five one six dash twenty-one to allow development of an industrial park for approximately forty-seven point four two eight acres. Property located south of State Highway nine and west of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Southeast along John Saxon Boulevard. Together with agenda um, item number twelve B, PP dash one nine two zero dash one four. Consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by Norman Economic Development Coalition, Inc. And Chikasaw Nation Industries for Saxon Industrial Park for forty-seven point four two eight eight acres of property located south of State Highway nine west of Thirty-Sixth Avenue Southeast along Ja- on Saxon Boulevard. Um, do we have a staff presentation?
Hope's if I am mute. Uh, Laura Hoggit with the City Planning Department. So we have an application from the Norman Economic Development Coalition Incorporated and Chikasaw Nation Industries Incorporated for amendment of the approved uses and the site development plan approved with PUD O dash oh six oh seven dash thirty-six, thirty-five and O dash fifteen sixteen dash twenty-one. And this is south of State Highway nine and west of Thirty-Sixth Avenue along John Saxon Boulevard. Um, so it is currently zone PUD that we're um, listed before to the east. There's A two. I think we have feedback, so.
Hope's.
And to the west, it's I one and PUD and then to the south PUD and then um, to the north, PUD two. Um, it's vacant to the north and east and south and then to the west, um, we have some commercial and office and industrial buildings. Um, this is an aerial of the site. It is vacant. So here we have um, looking north, west and then east. Uh, this is our preliminary plat and our site development plan. Um, staff forwards this for your consideration and we do have the applicant on the line. Um, I think they have a presentation as well.
Um, thank you. I'd like to um, proceed on to the applicant's presentation in the interest of um, expediency and to couples uh, questions to both staff and the applicant um, to follow.
Yeah, thank you. This is Yana Joyce with Rieger Law Group, uh, attorneys for the applicant. I'll move pretty quick here because I know we're pretty late in the night and Laura pretty much summed it up. But this is the location map, uh, just to orient everyone. Uh, we've got Norman Business Park up here to the north a little bit. Destin Landing has been approved for um, high-density residential to the south. Saxon Park is uh, to the northeast uh, with Hitachi over here and um, uh, here's a aerial showing the Destin Landing Plan and also the plan for Saxon Park. As we go through here, this is also, like Laura said, a preliminary plat and a PUD request. Initially, we filed uh, just for the preliminary plat. Um, but staff told us they'd like us to kind of clean up the kind of scattered PUDs in the area and tie it to the new uh, preliminary plat. So we've submitted a PUD as well. This is again, the preliminary plat. It's four lots, uh, about forty-seven acres. And there will be uh, a creation of a new public street that runs east and west through this property. It's going to connect with uh, John Saxon Boulevard and also uh, Technology Road. Here's the preliminary site plan shows uh, just conceptual buildings at this point. Um, if it's revised for any uh, substantially more dense use, we'd have to come back, but this is the conceptual plan at this point. We've uh, submitted a PUD for industrial uses, office and suburban commercial uses. Uh, it's a little conceptual at this time. Now, here's the request zoning. It is a prior kind of scattered PUD throughout this area. We're going to bring it all within one amended PUD which supersedes the prior ones uh, and no change to the twenty-twenty-five industrial designation. Here is the proposed green space, be twenty percent, roughly twenty percent green space throughout the development uh, with the tension areas shown throughout throughout the site. And then uh, again, here's just a quick summary. No protest. Uh, nobody attended pre-development meeting, uh, no comments from Green Belt. And we had a staff report approving or recommending approval of the preliminary plat. So happy to entertain any questions you may have on the side.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from commissioners for either the applicant or staff? Seeing that I I will entertain a motion.
So who?
A motion, make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Thank you. That was a motion from Commissioner Bird and a second from Commissioner Beck. Um, may we have a vote?
Um, Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Approved.
Uh, Mr. Knott?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Approved.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayham?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to approve carried eight to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Um, thank you. Moving on to agenda item number thirteen, O dash one nine two zero dash four four. In ordinance of the council of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, amending chapter twenty-two of the code of the city of Norman, section four four one, the board of adjustment to amend the renewal procedure under paragraph seven F for a special exception to permit a mobile home to serve as a temporary second dwelling to relieve a medical hardship and providing for the severability thereof. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do. Good evening, commissioners. Uh, Jane Hudson, Norman Planning Department. So a little bit of the history on this uh, change came actually from a board of adjustment uh, discussion. We had uh, applications continuing to come back for these medical hardships. Um, and it is, it is costly for the applicants to come forward and request an extension um, for the uh, second living facility there to have a caregiver on the property with them. So Board of Adjustment had asked us if there was something that we could do to um, give an extension or have this done administratively for a period of time. So what you're looking at tonight is an amendment that the exception can be approved for up to uh, three years on any lot that is five acres or greater in the A two zoning district. Um, and the exception can now be renewed every three years by uh, filling out an application for an administrative ex- extension, which they would have to su- uh, submit a doctor's note stating that nothing had really changed. And then uh, we can give them two administrative extensions. And then on the third one, they would have to come back and get approval from uh, Board of Adjustment again. And then that would also involve notifying the uh, adjacent property owners. So that is the amendment that we're presenting to you tonight for your consideration. So that is the amendment that we're presenting to you tonight for your consideration.
Thank you, Jane. Do we have any questions for staff from Commissioners? Okay, I don't see any. Do we have an applicant presentation? Just me? Then I'd like you to entertain a motion, please, or actually a discussion.
Oh, I have no discussion. I was just going to make a motion.
Okay, a motion, please, from Commissioner Beck.
Erin Williford, I second.
End of vote.
Jane deserted me, so I'm having to turn on my mic.
Sorry.
Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Approved.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Approved.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to approve carried eight to zero.
Thank you, Renee. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 14, O-1920-45, in ordinance and of this Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, amending Chapter 22 of the Code of the City of Norman, Sections 420.3 Residential Estate Dwelling District, 422.9 Office Institutional District, 423.2 C1 District, and 424.2 Tourist Commercial District in order to resolve language inconsistencies and update cross-references by removing the RE Special Use, allowing one use permitted in the M1 Restricted Industrial District, clarify zoning uses, including medical marijuana zoning uses, and providing for the severability thereof. And do we have a staff presentation?
Good evening, we do. So this one is regarding, there's actually two things that we'll be covering within this. Many years ago, in, I want to say, in nineteen ninety, there was an ordinance that was established that allowed property owners to, in the A1, A2, and RE districts to request a special use from one of the M1 uses, which is the I'm sorry, I've gone blank, what the M Restricted Industrial District. And so what this did is when we adopted the Medical Marijuana Grow uses in the last year or so, that gave property owners the ability to come forward requesting a special use from the M1 District in the RE, the Residential Estates District, which would allow grow. The concern with allowing the medical marijuana operations as special use in the nineteen ninety conditional uses was they actually had annual inspections. And we no longer do annual inspections. They're actually considered special uses now. But the Council's determination of medical marijuana zoning made in December of two thousand and eighteen and again in August of two thousand and nineteen, Council had declined to place medical marijuana uses in the RE District. So we were just trying to clean up some of the zoning that existed to take the medical marijuana uses out of the RE District on that one. And then on the other one, there was some zoning ordinance cleanup in the O1 Office Institutional District. It removes medical marijuana testing laboratory as allowed by state law from the list of special uses and adds it to the permitted uses along with laboratories for research. In the C1 Local Commercial District, the medical marijuana testing laboratories are specifically excluded from the permitted uses. And in the C2 General Commercial District, Tier Three Medical Marijuana Processor and Medical Marijuana Research Facility are specifically excluded from any special use permissible in C1. There was also one more change in the TC Tourist Commercial District as allowed by state law is added to the Tier One Medical Marijuana Processor and Tier Two Medical Marijuana Processor. So those are just some cleanup amendments that we have in the zoning ordinance for this item.
Thank you, Jane. Do we have any, any questions for staff? Okay, I don't see any questions. Do we have any comments from the public?
No.
Thank you. How about some discussion from Commissioners? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Steve McDaniel.
Dave Beck, I'll second.
End of vote. Mr. Peacock?
You're muted.
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Approved.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Yes.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to approve carried eight to zero.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Fifteen, O-1920-51. In ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, deleting Section 5-404 of Article Four of Chapter Five, building construction, reserving the same, and adding Section 22-431.10 Residential Carports to Chapter 22 Zoning Ordinance and amending Section 22-441 Board of Adjustment to Chapter 22 Zoning Ordinance of the Code of the City of Norman to establish new residential carport standards in the zoning ordinance and provide for Board of Adjustment review of residential carport applications as special exceptions and providing for the severability of. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do. So this item actually has been going on for several years. I believe the initial discussion at Council Committee and Council Study Session started in two thousand and fourteen. For many years, we have had residents within the city of Norman that wanted to construct a carport on their property. However, the regulations were in Chapter Five. And there was a date of nineteen sixty-six that the house had to have been constructed prior to nineteen sixty-six. And the Board of Adjustment had no authority over Chapter Five. So we went through, obviously, years of discussion of trying to figure out a way to make this better for the residents in Norman so that you know, I mean, this is twenty twenty, and we're looking at houses that were built in nineteen seventy-five, nineteen eighty. Some of the garages have been converted. And you know, even if they haven't been converted, in some cases, the larger SUVs and trucks just don't fit in some of the garages anymore. But with the way the regulations were, we just didn't have any ability to give them a variance to allow them to have a carport. So through many years of discussion, we have come up with the ordinance that is attached to your agenda packet tonight. And with that also, we're moving it to Chapter Twenty-Two and giving the applicant, I guess it's actually a requirement, they have to go to Board of Adjustment. And they will be able to construct these carports in front of their front setback line. So I would be happy to answer any questions you might have on this. But it, you know, it's been a long time coming, and a lot of people in the community are very excited about this opportunity.
Thank you, Jane. Do we have any questions from Commissioners?
Steve McDaniel, is there a particular reason why we have a two hundred dollar fee? I mean, it's five hundred dollars to put it up. I mean, was there some logic behind that?
Those are the fees that are established in the ordinance as it is right now. We did not talk about reducing any of those fees. That would be something that we would have to go back and amend.
Thank you.
I would hope that we wouldn't allow someone to put up a five hundred dollar parking deal because they don't stay very long. The ones that seems like they usually spend a little bit more money on them.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Do we have further comment from Commissioners? I don't, I don't see any. Do we have any comments from the public? Okay, I don't see any. And do we have any further discussion from Commissioners?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
That was a motion.
Yeah. McDaniel second, Beck first.
Thank you. End of vote.
Mr. Peacock?
Yes.
Ms. Williford?
Approved.
Mr. Knotts?
Yes.
Ms. Zink?
Yes.
Ms. Bird?
Approved.
Mr. Beck?
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
The motion to approve carried eight to zero.
Jane, you're not muted. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Sixteen, O-1920-56. In ordinance of this Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, adding thirteen dash one oh eight U Short Term Rental Fee, adding Article Thirty-Five Short Term Rentals, Section Thirteen dash three five zero zero through thirteen dash three five zero eight. Amending four twenty point one A1 General Agricultural District, four twenty point two A2 Rural Agricultural District, four twenty point three RE Residential Estate Dwelling District, four twenty one point one R1 Single Family Dwelling District, four twenty two point two RM4 Mobile Home Park District, four twenty two point nine O1 Office Institutional District, four twenty three point one CO Suburban Office Commercial District, four twenty four point two TC Tourist Commercial District, four twenty nine MUD Mixed Use Development District, adding Section four three one point one one Short Term Rentals and amending Section four fifty Definitions in Article fourteen of Chapter Twenty-Two Zoning Ordinance, all in order to update city code licensing provisions and the zoning ordinance to allow for short-term rentals and to add definitions and other related provisions and providing for the severability of. Do we have a staff presentation?
We do. So what we're presenting to you tonight is the zoning changes to allow the short-term rentals within these districts. This has, again, been to Council Committee and Council Study Session several times. Jeannie Snyder in Legal has worked for a couple of years on getting these established. And the proposal moving forward is to have the short-term rentals as allowed districts, I mean, as allowed uses within these districts that you see. So it would be the agricultural, all of the residential districts, and then continuing through the suburban office, general commercial, tourist commercial, and the mixed-use development districts. There will be some districts that do require a council approval for special use to operate the short-term rentals. Of course, any PUD or SPUD that was previously adopted, short-term rentals cannot be in allowed use without first receiving approval from City Council. There are some stipulations that an applicant may be issued no more than four short-term rental license unless they comply with special use in the zoning ordinance section four thirty-four point one. And then if a license is denied, suspended, or revoked, and an applicant desires to submit a new application, then they'll be required to also go through Section four thirty-four point one for a special use. We do have the guidelines that you see in your packet tonight. Then these guidelines will be added to the zoning ordinance in Section four thirty-one point eleven outlining the general conditions and the license applications and such. The districts not allowing the short-term rentals would be the rural commercial district, the industrial districts I1, I2, as well as the M1 Restricted Industrial District. And again, these are just the outlines for the general conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this. The licensing, obviously, will go through the city clerk's office. But as far as getting them as an allowed use in the zoning district, that's what this is moving forward for.
Thank you, Jane. Do we have any, any questions for staff?
This is Steve McDaniel. I have a real quick question. It talks about an inspection period or an inspection fee. Looking at adding, in this example, one hundred and fifty new new homes to be inspected. Do we have the capability to do that? Do we have the resources to do that?
Yes, I do believe we do. We have five code officers that could be assigned some of these inspections. I don't expect that they will hit all at once. The licensing will, you know, be staggered to some extent. But we also have seven building inspectors that could also be going out to complete some of these inspections.
So these will not be inspections that are applied to the bed and breakfast or any other type. This would be a different type of inspection, correct? You know, am I, am I, am I getting that correct?
You know, Jeannie, are you, are you out there? Jeannie Snyder in Legal?
Yeah. Yeah, we want them to be inspected for things like you know, EGRAS, fire alarms, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide. There's some parking requirements, things like that. If they have to have fire extinguisher, you know, the fire department requires certain things of this type of property. It's going to be a challenge, but like Jane said, we're going to get it done. We've been working on this for about two years. It has evolved over two years. It has changed a lot from the beginning. But we're also really comfortable with. We attached the licensing. Just we thought you all would want to see that. But what we're really, what I'm really excited about is the monitoring service. If you read about that, any? They are actually building, we're going to have a way to online register. We're actually working with them to build a test site right now. The fees for the short-term rentals will cover those costs. It's going to be pretty easy for the host to register. But it's also, we're going to have a twenty-four seven hotline, so there can be complaints. So I'm really excited about that. We also will be able to know where every short-term rental is in Norman from the social media platforms that this monitoring company sweeps, I think, is what they call it, almost daily. So if somebody's not licensed, we'll have a way to reach out to them. And we're going to be able to keep on top of that really well with this monitoring service. The inspections in the beginning, I think, might be a challenge just a little. But as Jane said, it's going to be staggered. They're not going to all hit, you know, one hundred and fifty. And that's an estimate. We have about two hundred in Norman right now. I don't expect them all to register because I think some of them will determine that it won't be worth it. But I think they'll come in staggered, and we're going to get it done. That's one thing the council really was concerned about with the inspection.
Okay. And then one additional question is, are we collecting the sales tax or the taxes associated similar to what we're collecting on hotels and bed and breakfast and so forth? Do you know if we are, if they're remitting those funds to the city?
Not right now, they're not. They're Not right now, they're not. They're, they are not. And that's why we want to get this up and running. The monitoring service will also be a way for them to submit their tax forms online and we can see it monthly. And part of the service will also help us. And I'm, I'm learning how this software is going to work, but it'll be able to, you know, really do a deep dive on each location. So if we get information in that says one property rented five nights out of the month, we'll be able to get a really good idea like, no, you rent it at this rate twenty-two nights. And make sure that we are getting pretty close to the amount of tax that we should be getting. But right now, we have not been getting any. There's no mechanism for it right now. They're actually not operating legally, so I'm ready to get, we, we'd like to get this up and running by the end of the summer, of course. The COVID nineteen put a little hitch in everybody's you know, timeline, but no, and we want to start collecting that.
Well, and I was just the last point. I know that the Airbnb and I believe they are collecting that tax. But they're not remitting that and that's just
Not to the city.
They're, but they're collecting the tax. And, and if they're not remitting it to the city, I would, I'd question, what are they doing with it? So that's just a point and
We would have the ability, I think, to, once we locate, to maybe do some retroactive. But the council said, let's just start when we start, not worry about trying to go back in time. And let's just start getting it collected. But this monitoring service is going to help us make sure that we'll know where they are and we'll know pretty darn close if they're submitting the correct amount of tax. And then for the neighbors in the neighborhoods, they're going to have this twenty-four seven hotline that will be able to help monitor any problems. And then you have, one of the other requirements is a local contact that can respond quickly twenty-four hours a day. So we've got to have a name that John Smith is the one who's going to come and do it. So we've, we've looked at a lot of the ordinances across the country and everybody's is different. You have to make it kind of unique to your community.
Sounds great. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. And Jane, can we remove the, the presentation window? Thank you. Just, does anybody else have a question for staff? Okay, I don't see any. Do we have any public comment? Okay, I don't see any comment. Do we have any discussion from the Commissioners?
I move if we approve.
That's a motion from Commissioner Beck. I'm sorry, who is the second from?
Sandy Bayhan.
No, thank you. End of vote, please.
Mr. Peacock.
Yes.
Ms. Williford.
Approved.
Mr. Knotts.
Yes.
Ms. Zink.
Yes.
Ms. Bird.
Yes.
Mr. Beck.
Yes.
Ms. Bayhan.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
The motion to approve carried eight to zero.
Thank you, Renee. We are into the Ms. Lenny's comments portion. If anybody has any comment they'd like to make.
I'm sure everybody's going to kill me for making a comment because it's so late. But I promised a friend of mine that I would make this comment. We were talking today about COVID nineteen and what's that's doing to urban gatherings, places and spaces and public restaurants and outdoor seating. And she brought up some really good questions about how we can create walkable, sitable pathways through Norman. I was thinking of Alameda to twelfth. There's no place to sit down between Alameda and twelfth. And you've got long sidewalks there. You see people walking in the grocery store. If we started having little places, little nooks where you could have a couple of park benches where people could sit socially isolated and talk and rest. That would work for seniors and it would work for just anybody that's out walking that wants to talk to their neighbor but doesn't want to get too close. And so I said I'd bring it up at the meeting because that's something I'd hope that our planning department can start looking at. Is how are we going to reconfigure? We were talking about even down on Main Street. How can we reconfigure the sidewalks to provide outdoor seating because people are sitting outside because you're healthier because the air is blowing? Restaurant owners don't want to bring people in yet because of the restrictions. And that might carry on for a long time. So we've talked about making Main Street two-way. And if we cut out a lane, could we add sidewalk or outdoor seating areas on either side of Main Street to expand the sidewalks, create more room to maneuver and get past each other and stay socially isolated, yet convening? Or like Art Walks. So I just, I said I'd bring it up and so I brought it up.
Thank you, Commissioner Beck. Do we have any further comments from the Commissioners? Seeing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye.